I'd like to reconvene our meeting. First, I guess, I want to thank you all for your patience making this switch. We're obviously trying to get all the technical things worked out because there's some presentations that we want to show you this evening. We're going to start the meeting off by going through reports and comments, and I'll turn it over to our student representatives, Kelsey and Hannah.
The March SGA meeting took place on the 13th. The freshmen talked about their March 13th Cirque du Soleil fundraiser, and it was a huge success. Thank you all for attending. May 22nd is their Reta Senior. The sophomores discussed the commencement flowers for the middle school and high school graduations and their blanket fundraiser. It'll be $30 for one blanket and $50 for two. Contact Miss Taskin in LTHS main office to place your order. The juniors discuss their Kiss the Senior Goodbye fundraiser, and the junior prom preparations are in the works. For seniors, their prom preparation is in the works as well. The executive board discussed the February 20th talent show. Asia Mathis won first place, Eddie Itay won second, and for third place, it was Seto Turkalu, Teddy Videl, Madison Vaccaro, and Callie Colen. Student leaders met with Stan Paul Steve on March 1st and learned new skills to better their school community. March 22nd and 23rd is the Booster's Gift Auction. Volunteers are needed. Contact Mrs. York in W108 to volunteer. On April 6th, student leaders will be attending a Mike Smith presentation at Sarahville War Memorial High School. On April 12th, the Special Olympics Food Server volunteers are needed. Contact Mrs. York to volunteer. On April 13th, H&amp;M Potter Auction volunteers are needed. And the 2019-2020 Election Paperwork is due Friday, March 22nd, in W108. The next SGA meeting is 6:30 to 7:30 on Wednesday, April 10th, in the lecture hall.
March's Matthew Blum Unsung Hero Award goes to Tristan Eli. Tristan is an avid SGA, ADA, fishing club, and interact member. He spends so much of his free time not only attending these club meetings, but being an active member and volunteer. He is friendly to everyone he meets and radiates positivity. Tristan births with school spirit, and our Navy Nation would not be the same without him. Regardless of what he's required to do, Tristan never fails to lend a helping hand and create a fun environment. It is for these reasons that Tristan Eli has been selected for March's Matthew Blum Unsung Hero Award. Congratulations, Tristan.
At this time, I would like to turn it over to the report of the superintendent and Dr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Giordano, and thank you so much to Kelsey and Hannah for sharing your comments. And congratulations to Tristan and his family. And is that your mom, Tristan? So can you please stand up and be recognized? Round of applause, once again. Fantastic recognition, and these are our unsung heroes because they're always in the shadows doing great things. And so congratulations. Get some really good photos. Congrats. So I know that you can't see it, but in a little bit, we will drop the screen. I wanted to thank Christina Baizy, who's a grade top 12 student at Lacy Township High School for designing the cover of tonight's Board Agenda. Fantastic artwork. And to Melanie Shoemaker for designing the cover of the superintendent's report. I say this every month, but I really do want to invite you over to the board office. We have all of the board covers, the superintendent's report frames hanging in the board office, and it looks absolutely fantastic. So I hope you do get a chance, but a round of applause to Christina and Melanie. All right, so we have several presentations for you this evening. We are going to start with Mr. Brandis to do our Seniors of the Month, and then we're going to transition to something that I've been talking about since, I think, November, and that is to showcase all the wonderful things going on in our school district. We're calling it a Lacy Minute, but I'm happy to say that it is a little bit more than a minute. So after the Students of the Month, we're going to show you the March edition of the Lacy Minute, and that will be followed by Mr. DeGeorge's presentation of the tentative budget. So, Mr. Brandis, are you ready for us? There we are. Okay, great. But I'm going to ask you to come down and take a look at the screen.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you again for your patience. I know everybody's here for multiple reasons, and we appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Especially to be able to recognize our Seniors of the Month, it's certainly my most enjoyable part of the board meetings. Also, along with Tristan, congratulations. So first, I'd like to invite Callie Colen, who is our first Senior of the Month. Callie, go ahead, please. Congratulations to Callie. And Brandon Chorley, who has tonight, congratulations. Congratulations, Callie.
Good evening. I'm Greg Brandis, Principal of Lacy Township High School, and we're here to celebrate March's Seniors of the Month. Congratulations to Callie Colen. Congratulations. Here to celebrate her accomplishments is John Pearl.
I'm here with March Senior of the Month, Callie Colen. Congratulations, Callie.
Thank you.
So how does it feel to be Senior of the Month?
It feels good to reach this point, you know, that my time here has been recognized.
And what have you been involved in throughout high school?
I've been a part of a lot of freshman year, I can captain my sophomore year, and that's pretty much it.
And what teacher would you say has had the biggest impact on your high school career?
Probably the STEM Academy teachers, it's Coop out of the six chair.
Thank you, Callie. Congratulations on the Student of the Month. Having it for four years in the STEM Academy has made me really appreciate all the hard work and dedication you have put into your high school experience. I'll always remember you for your hard work. I'll always remember you for your persistence and your attention to detail. You're an amazing student, and everyone wants you the best of luck in your next adventure. And what qualities has led you to get through high school?
Definitely my commitment to school itself and my ability to go beyond when I try.
And what do you miss the most here at Lacy Township High School?
Probably the people and the atmosphere in this building.
And what are your plans going in the future?
I'm going to try academia for an engineering degree.
Congratulations again, Callie Colen, Senior of the Month.
Thank you, Callie. Congratulations again. Next, I'd like to welcome J. Hall, our Senior of the Month. Hello, we're back. J. Hall, congratulations, Senior of the Month. Congratulations to J. Hall, Senior of the Month tonight, a well-deserved honor. Congratulations. We're going to watch a presentation of J. and his accomplishments. Much more exciting. Hello, we're back here to celebrate March's Seniors of the Month. Congratulations, J. Hall. Congratulations. Here to celebrate their accomplishments is Ken Horn.
I'm here with J. Hall. Congratulations, J. Hall, Senior of the Month.
Thank you.
How's it feel being Senior of the Month?
It feels really good. It feels like my accomplishments are getting recognized.
What were you involved with throughout high school?
I was on the volleyball team here, and I'm currently in the drama club, and I'm also in the STEM Academy.
Which teacher had the biggest impact on your high school success?
I'm going to have to honestly say vice STEM instructors, Mrs. Sotera, Mr. Cruzon, but also Mr. Fredson, Mr. Fisher, for making the humanities and language a lot of fun.
Congratulations, J. Hall, Senior of the Month. I'm sure you're proud of all the accomplishments you've had thus far. I can't wait to see what you accomplish in college in your National Physics degree. Please make sure you come back and visit us.
And what qualities would you say helped you succeed?
My complete dedication to school.
What are you going to miss the most if you graduate?
My friends and the atmosphere I get here at high school, and knowing that I always have a place to go and I always have teachers I can go to.
And what are your plans for after school?
I want to pursue a degree in astrophysics, hopefully in a league college, but haven't gotten my acceptance letter yet because they sent it all to late March.
Congratulations again, I'm being Senior of the Month, J.
Congratulations. All right, another round. Sorry, Mr. Brandis, sorry.
Congratulations to J., Callie, also Tristan McGinnell, all of our members.
Second one or two is Mr. Brandis. Congratulations to all of our Seniors of the Month and to our unsung hero. Another round of applause for their hard work. All right, so as I mentioned, we are about to show you the Lacy Minute. Round of applause to our students who put this together, Mr. Merman, for leading them. I am really, really excited about what they put together, and I hope that this is the beginning of a very long tradition of the Lacy Minute.
This is Miss Block's class, and we were learning about fractures. Now we're treating as if her room was at range zero.
Buenos dias. Este es mi proyecto, frases importantes.
Nada hay de menos que baja de esto.
You know, you can't leave the water cycle if it's easy, you know. You're a different.
[music]
[inaudible]
Which is good! And there it is! Carlos Swanson, thousand career points! Come back, kid! If we get a thousand points, what is this? What is this? You know, when it makes you want to give it to your kid, if we get a thousand points, uh, I'm going to see some ball player to do it, Jack?
Ball player.
That's an amazing accomplishment.
So, once again, I wanted to thank Mr. Merman and his entire television crew for putting that together. One thing that I'm going to encourage is tomorrow morning to all of our teachers or support staff, I am going to be sending this video out so that everybody can see it, and what we're asking is that we continue to send in all the great news, all of the great videos, so that we can start immediately putting together our Lacy Minute for April 2019. So stay tuned, lots of great things to come. Okay, so we're going to have to do this all over again when we go back down for Mr. DeGeorge. But before we do that, I wanted to make a few comments prior to Mr. DeGeorge presenting the tentative budget. I know that there is a lot of uncertainty about the tentative budget that Mr. DeGeorge is about to present, but there is also a lot, a lot of misinformation about how the budget will impact our district. We intend to clarify that misinformation tonight, especially with regard to our power professionals. So let me start by saying this. The loss of state aid that Governor Murphy signed into law last year is a problem for many school districts in New Jersey, including ours. For those of you who are interested in doing some research, and I implore you to do some research, it's called S2. S isn't Sam, the number two. We are in the process of a lawsuit with seven other school districts to seek relief from the state aid cuts that we will face over the next six years under S2. I also want to say this, from a historical perspective, the Lacy Township School District has never faced the kind of state aid cuts that we are about to face over the next six years. It's unprecedented for us. So while we understand that there is not an endless amount of state aid, all we are asking for is that state aid funding is fair and equitable across New Jersey school districts. When we consider our cuts, and Mr. DeGeorge is going to make that very clear in his presentation, when we compare our cuts, when we consider our cuts, and compare them to a district like Lakewood, who is receiving an additional $15 million to the $15 million they've already received, it is difficult to reconcile that that is fair or even equitable. So if you're angry, you should be. We're very angry too. And if you're wondering what you can do about it, I'm going to make some recommendations. The first, make your voice loud and heard. Call Governor Murphy and let him know what you think. We'll get you the phone number. Mrs. Regina can share the phone number with you. Call the ninth legislative district that represents our township and let them know your thoughts. We need to make our voices heard, like many other school districts have, and we need to talk about what is fair and what is equitable. So we're angry, and we know you're angry too. It is not an unreasonable request to ask for fairness and to ask for equity. We've had numerous meetings with the ninth legislative district. I know that they have written numerous letters to Governor Murphy's office. We have sent numerous letters to Dr. Rebelet, who's our Commissioner of Education, to talk about fairness and equity. We are currently waiting the results of that lawsuit. Like I said, we are one of eight school districts. So there are still a lot of unknowns. We don't know where that lawsuit is going to end up. But again, I'm going to implore you to do some research on what S2 means. So there are going to be some more comments, but I would like Mr. DeGeorge to present the tentative budget, and then I'm going to talk a little bit about the misinformation that I refer to at the beginning of my comments. Mr. DeGeorge, are you ready?
Good evening, everyone, and thanks for coming out tonight to support your causes. We are, have been presented a very, very brief presentation on the tentative, which is another word for preliminary budget. The budget that you see tonight not only can change, it will change, at least in part, between now and the time that the final budget is adopted in met. So without further ado, Mr. Lytle, Dr. Clark spoke about state aid. It's safe to say that probably every school district of the 500-plus school districts in the state of New Jersey received at least some state aid. For us, in our district in Lacy Township, state aid comprises 30% of our operating budget revenue. That's a very large percent. So when it changes, it causes dramatic changes to our operating budget. So as you can see, by the time we get done with the 2024-2025 school year, our district will have lost, if S2 continues, over $4.7 million, which is over 20% of our state aid. So as Dr. Clark said, next year, the 2019-2020 school year will be the first of six very challenging budgets for us to put together, which is going to necessitate us to make some very difficult choices in our district. If you've been through budget presentations with us before, you will know that there are essentially three main types of budgets in a public school district. There's the operating budget, which is by far the largest budget. There's the grants and entitlements budget, which is basically state aid, no child left behind, IDEA, and those types of other smaller grants. And debt service, which is what our repayment is on the debt, the money that we have borrowed as a district from taxpayers in the district. So you can see that we're going to talk a little bit about, we're going to focus on the operating budget because it's the biggest, but grants, we only budget 75% typically of what our actual grant revenue is. And debt service, you'll see, has decreased overall from last year, this year rather, to next year, which is a good thing. So can we switch, please? Okay, here we go, operating revenue. Put the rest of them up. Five. Yes, cool. All right, so we'll take it part by part. These are the standard components of the operating budget for a school district on the revenue side of the budget, right? The lion's share is from our local tax levy, which, as you can see, we have projected to increase 2% for the coming school year. The board had no option to increase taxes beyond 2% this year. It did not have any waivers available to it because we are projecting that healthcare costs will decrease a little bit from this year to next, and the district has no what is called as banked cap, which allows the district to increase tax levy above 2%. So the maximum increase on the operating budget levy is 2%. So when you combine that increase with the 0.57% increase, or $17,000 increase on the debt service portion of levy, the overall levy is going to increase 1.91%, which speaks to the district's fiscal responsibility to taxpayers. State aid, as I said, for next year, net of all the tiny little state aid monies that we get, will decrease about $500,000 net, or 2%. The fund balance that will be taken is comprised partly of excess surplus from the 2017-2018 school year, plus $511,000 that the district has decided to borrow against itself in anticipation of excess surplus that it may generate in this school year. It's important to understand that because the district has done everything it can to increase revenue every dollar that has available to it. That's important to note. We're not, at this point, although we reserve the right to do so, take money out of reserves to take care of some more health and safety-related projects, and the encumbrances will come when we have the audit for this year. Then miscellaneous, those things like the sale of renewable energy credits, we predict we'll be able to generate just a little bit more miscellaneous revenue next year. So that's our budget. The operating budget is $70,004, $69,006. No more, no less. Can we go to the other side of this? So unlike the federal government, we have to have a balanced budget. And you'll see, when we get to the end of the next slide, that it's exactly the $70,046 in appropriations. This is the other side of the budget, the spending plan for the district, things that it is committed contractually to provide to staff and students. So you can see, these categories, by the way, are not made up by us. These categories are given to us by the New Jersey Department of Education. So you'll see, regular instruction, special education instruction. It's important to note, if you look at, there will be a decrease in tuition for out-of-district students, and we're budgeting a decrease in related services, which is important because it means that we are doing a better job trying to provide an environment here so that we don't have to send our students out to another school district as we have. So you'll see a corresponding increase in special education instruction as a result of trying to bring the students back into our district. Can you just, sure. This is the remaining categories. So administration, important to note, I know that it's very much on people's mind. Administrative costs, which include, by the way, central office, school administration, we're projecting only a 1% increase with central office having a big decrease as a component of that. Information technology, we hired an outstanding information technology director in our district. He's already was a teacher, Mr. Jason England. He has provided us with 21st century technology with efficiencies, budgetary, and well, it's operational. He's a very, very good person, and he has helped us budget less, and the costs for technology are projected to be less. But the elephant in the room is the benefits line. So as I mentioned before, the district does not have the ability to take advantage of increasing the tax levy because of the increase in benefits, but we're having a decrease. The vast majority of the reason that we're having a decrease or projecting a decrease in the current year is because the district was able to work with all of its employees to move from the more costly New Jersey Direct 10 medical plan to the New Jersey Direct 15 medical plan. Pretty much the same level of benefits, but at a lower cost, not only to the district, but to the employees as well. The other part of the reason, and Dr. Clark will talk a little bit about that in a couple minutes, is a restructuring of some of our staff. So that really is the reason that we're able to even put together a balanced budget at all. Everybody likes to talk about per pupil costs, right? So we're projecting a slight decrease, as has been our trend in enrollment, just under 4,000 students, which is probably maybe 10 or 20 lower than the current school year. Total cost per pupil, $16,000, which is slightly above the state average, but it's important, it's important to note that, as Dr. Clark said, next year, the 2019-2020 school year will be the first of six very challenging budgets for us to put together, which is going to necessitate us to make some very difficult choices in our district. If you've been through budget presentations with us before, you will know that there are essentially three main types of budgets in a public school district. There's the operating budget, which is by far the largest budget. There's the grants and entitlements budget, which is basically state aid, no child left behind, IDEA, and those types of other smaller grants. And debt service, which is what our repayment is on the debt, the money that we have borrowed as a district from taxpayers in the district. the money that we have borrowed as a district from taxpayers in the district. So you can see that we're going to talk a little bit about, we're going to focus on the operating budget because it's the biggest. But grants, we only budget 75% typically of what our actual grant revenue is. And debt service, you'll see, has decreased overall from last year, this year rather, to next year, which is a good thing. So can we switch, please? Okay, here we go, operating revenue. Can you just put the rest of them up? Yes, please. All right. So we'll take it part by part. These are the standard components of the operating budget for a school district on the revenue side of the budget, right? The lion's share is from our local tax levy, which, as you can see, we have projected to increase 2% for the coming school year. The board had no option to increase taxes beyond 2% this year. It did not have any waivers available to it because we are projecting that healthcare costs will decrease a little bit from this year to next. And the district has no what is called as banked cap, which allows the district to increase tax levy above 2%. So the maximum increase on the operating budget levy is 2%. So when you combine that increase with the 0.57% increase or $17,000 increase on the debt service portion of levy, the overall levy is going to increase 1.91%, which speaks to the district's fiscal responsibility to taxpayers. State aid, as I said, for next year, net of all the tiny little state aid monies that we get, will decrease about $500,000 net or 2%. The fund balance that will be taken is comprised partly of excess surplus from the 2017-2018 school year, plus $511,000 that the district has decided to borrow against itself in anticipation of excess surplus that it might generate in this school year. It's important to understand that because the district has done everything it can to increase revenue every dollar that it has available to it. That's important to know. We're not, at this point, although we reserve the right to do so, take money out of reserves to take care of some more health and safety-related projects. And encumbrances will come when we have the audit for this year. And then miscellaneous, those things like the sale of renewable energy credits, we predict we'll be able to generate just a little bit more miscellaneous revenue next year. So that's our budget. The operating budget is $70,469,006. No more, no less. Can we go to the other side, please? So unlike the federal government, we have to have a balanced budget. And you'll see, when we get to the end of the next slide, that it's exactly the $70,469,006 in appropriations. This is the other side of the budget, the spending plan for the district, things that it is committed contractually to provide to staff and students. So you can see, these categories, by the way, are not made up by us. These categories are given to us by the New Jersey Department of Education. So you'll see, regular instruction, special education instruction. It's important to note, if you look at, there will be a decrease in tuition for out-of-district students. And we're budgeting a decrease in related services, which is important because it means that we are doing a better job trying to provide an environment here so that we don't have to send our students out to another school district as we have. So you'll see a corresponding increase in special education instruction as a result of trying to bring the students back into our district. Can you just advance? Sure. This is the remaining categories. So administration, important to note, I know that it's very much on people's mind. Administrative costs, which include, by the way, central office, school administration. We're projecting only a 1% increase with central office having a big decrease as a component of that. Information technology, we hired an outstanding information technology director in our district, he's already was a teacher, Mr. Jason England. He has provided us with 21st century technology with efficiencies, budgetary, and well as operational. He's a very, very good person, and he has helped us budget less, and the costs for technology are projected to be less. But the elephant in the room is the benefits line. So as I mentioned before, the district does not have the ability to take advantage of increasing the tax levy because of the increase in benefits. People are predicting a decrease. The vast majority of the reason that we're having a decrease or projecting a decrease from the current year is because the district was able to work with all of its employees to move from the more costly New Jersey Direct 10 medical plan to the New Jersey Direct 15 medical plan. Pretty much the same level of benefits, but at a lower cost, not only to the district, but to the employees as well. The other part of the reason, and Dr. Clark will talk a little bit about that in a couple of minutes, is a restructuring of some of our staff. So that really is the reason that we're able to even put together a balanced budget at all. Everybody likes to talk about per pupil costs, right? So we're projecting a slight decrease, as has been our trend in enrollment, just under 4,000 students, which is probably maybe 10 or 20 lower than the current school year. Total cost per pupil, $16,000, which is slightly above the state average. But it's important, it's important to note that we are doing everything we can to lower per pupil cost. And it's a little higher, but the quality of, oh, the quality of education here is very good. We provide everything we can provide to our students. So it's just a little bit higher than a state average. The administrative cost per pupil, $820 below. It's a big, big decrease. We're running consistently low. In fact, when we visit the county office for what's called the mid-year budget review, we are deficient because they tell us that we don't have enough administrators, that we don't have enough people trying to, I know. Sounds funny, doesn't it? Yeah. But it's, but it's true. You could look it up. It's true. So we are called on the carpet, sort of, because we don't have enough of the administrators per pupil that we are, according to the Department of Education, supposed to have. And the source, look it up yourself. This slide deck will be on the district website tomorrow. So you can look those indicators up and the budget guidelines as well. Mr. Lidle? All right. So how do you figure out a tax rate? This is it. You take your total taxes, right? And you divide them by the assessed valuation, that's what things are worth in town, and you multiply by 100. So here's our actual tax rate for next year. $51.5 million is the sum of the property tax levy on the operating budget, plus the $3 million on the debt service budget, added together, divided by the value of all properties in town that I get from the tax assessor of just under $4 billion, gives us that number, multiply by 100, and your tax rate is 1.322 for next year on the school portion of property tax levy. Okay? Another second, and I swear, last calculation. If you take the assessed value of your property, whatever it is, you'll get that also from your tax assessor. You divide that number by 100, you multiply times the tax rate that he just gave you of 1.322, and you will get the amount of property taxes that you will pay as a resident of Lacy Township next year for the school portion of your property taxes. You can slide it all, yeah, it's three or four lines. Yep. Okay, so in this 2018 school year, the tax assessor told me that the average value, not your value, but the average value of a home in town was $276.7. If you use our current year tax rate, that's what a home valued at $276.7 should be paying as a school portion of property taxes. He's telling me that that value increased $1,754, so that the average value of a home in town this year is slightly more. If you take the higher tax rate, as I said, next year you should be paying $36.7648. So value of a home goes up, that is good. Tax rate goes up, not great, but not bad, considering the fact that the value of everything went up in town. And you'll see that on that average home, you'll pay an additional $43.41 for the year, or $3.62 for each month, for the additional tax levy. So what's next? A couple of things. Oh. You're welcome. Two days from now, we are statutorily required to submit this tentative or preliminary budget to the Department of Education via the executive county superintendent. As I said, on May 6th, we will have a public presentation and adoption of the final budget, where there can be no changes after that. And then May 14th is the statutory deadline for us to transmit that final budget to the Department of Education. And that is the 2019-2020 tentative budget.
What's that? No. Was that radiation, is that it? Yeah, yeah, you can roll it out. And I'm just going to wait for you to turn the lights back on. But just don't kill us with the lights. Here we go.
Ready?
I don't need this. Do you need this?
Yeah, you can keep it by me when it's ready. You can just, uh...
Okay, thank you, Mr. DeGeorge, for your presentation. We appreciate you putting that together for us. So as I said earlier, I know that there are many thoughts on the budget that was just presented. I have no doubt that we are about to hear many of those thoughts. So this is where I'd like to address misinformation that is out in the community. First and foremost, and I can't stress this enough, students always, always come first. And while I'm not going to speak for any board member, I'm pretty certain that they're all going to agree with me. Students always come first for me as superintendent, for every single board member that's sitting up here, for every administrator that works in this district, for every teacher, and for every power professional. So I felt it was really important to start with that point. So what does that mean? It means that students who require power professional assistance as determined by their IEPs will continue to receive those services exactly as they have in the past. No change. Exactly as they have in the past. Again, our mindset has been and will continue to always be students first. So with all that said, we will bring power professionals back full-time to meet the needs of our students based on IEP needs as mandated by the State Department of Education and by seniority. Now, that's an important word because not many people know what that means. We are in the process of a discussion with our labor attorney to help us define what that means. We are having conversations with union leadership to define exactly what that means. So I'm going to say that one more time. We will bring power professionals full-time to meet the needs of our students based on IEP needs as mandated by the State Department of Education and by seniority. And that's still in progress, for all the reasons I just outlined. Those power professionals who will return part-time will not return at minimum wage, as rumor has it. So I'm going to say that again. Power professionals who will return part-time will not return at minimum wage. I'm not sure where that rumor came from. We are in the process of exploring an hourly wage that is respectful of the hard work that our power professionals do each and every day in our classrooms. And I'm here to tell you, it is hard work, very hard work. And that is consistent with surrounding districts who are looking to see what is a respectful hourly wage. And we are going to explore that until we develop that. And we know that that's something that will work for our power professionals and our district, but more importantly, for our students. This information will clearly be defined to everyone over the next couple of days and the next couple of weeks. We're not going to keep people waiting. We're not going to keep it a mystery. So as we work through those details, when we're done talking to our labor attorney, when we're done collaborating with our union leadership, we will share that information. In fact, Mr. Ryan tells me that he is meeting with our power professionals tomorrow at 4:30. So I hope that that has dispelled some of the misinformation. Our students always come first. The services that they're receiving today, they're going to continue to receive in the future because we understand that our most fragile students are the ones that need the help the most. And we would never make decisions from a budgetary perspective that will hurt the students in our district that have the most significant needs. So I know that there are going to be a lot of questions. We will do our best to answer the information based on what we know today. And then more information will be explained as we get information, as I mentioned, from our labor attorney and from other resources. So switching gears, because our students are very important, I again wanted to congratulate our seniors of the month, Jay and Callie, and to our unsung hero, Tristan. Another round of applause for all of their accomplishments. That concludes my comments. President Giordano, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Clark, and thank you, Mr. DeGeorge, for the budget presentation. At this time, I want to open the floor up to public comment. I just want to keep everybody mindful that there are a lot of you in the room tonight. I'm certain there's a lot of people that want to get up and speak. I'm going to ask that you be mindful of your time, be respectful of each other, obviously make your points, but then move on because I would love to hear from everybody out here in the audience that wants to get up and voice their opinion. As Dr. Clark said, nobody on this board wants to be up here facing the situation that we're facing, which is being shoved down our throats by the state. Okay? No one. I know families that have children that are special needs children. I know the difference a power makes. I'm pretty certain the other six board members know the difference powers make. I know how important your job is. So with that, I'm going to open the floor to public comment. I ask that you come up to the podium. Please state your name and address. And please try to be as brief as possible out of respect for all your peers and everyone in the room this evening. I'll open the floor.
Yep. Okay.
So, my daughter has had a power since ninth grade, and she suffers from severe anxiety and other issues and rocking. And her having her power, which is in the IEP, is very, very important. She does have another service I'm not going to mention to help her with her education, but she goes to vocational. And if she doesn't have that power on that bus ride, she gets all beside herself. And I will say that this particular year has been really good for her with the program that she's in. Go ahead, a minute.
And if I didn't have a power, I would, every day I would be in Mr. Leonard's class because I would be so stressed out. It would be call Leonard land. It would be call Leonard.
I have one other thing that I know that doesn't pertain to this. I'll be real quick, okay? Amanda did driver's ed. And in the back of the certificate, it clearly states, "The certificate expires on the student's 18th birthday." Well, Amanda wasn't mature enough to go to driver's ed when she was 18. I let her go this year. Well, I go to motor vehicles, and I know that this really isn't important to anybody, it's important to me. So I go to motor vehicle, and they tell me that Amanda has to take the test all over again. You know, me, the crazy mother, no is not the equation. So I called everybody. I called Governor Murphy's office, the Director of Motor Vehicle, the gentleman, Mr. West, who actually does the testing. So the reason why I'm saying this, if there are, and I told Mr. Leonard this, and I told Mr. Angelo this, because I was very angry. I was, we were both, I was very upset when she couldn't go get her permit that day. So there is a gentleman by the name of Michael West who takes care of the permit testing total for the state of New Jersey. Mr. Angelo has the phone number. So that if there is another special ed student who is 18 or older and they're still in school up until 21, and they have an IEP, and they hand the IEP to motor vehicle, they should honor that. Because Silverton did not honor that until I threatened a lawsuit, and then they said, "Go get her permit." And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I have a third grader at Lenoka Harbor School with an IEP. He has an autism diagnosis. And I just want to say, all our powers should be valued and should be respected instead of being expendable pawns. They're making decisions based on money that is going to harm an entire population of our most vulnerable students. You think that cutting costs, excuse me, you think, you think that you're cutting costs, but to my child, having a consistent, caring, and professional para is a difference between his success and his failure. Our powers, students, and my son deserve better. Thank you.
My name is Christine Chaplinsky. I have a son that has been in the special education program in Lacey, excuse me, since his preschool disabled days. He is now a junior in the high school. Without the paras that have worked with him throughout the years, he would not be the success that he is as an 11th grader in this high school. I understand that you're saying these paras, and I know he has it in his IEP. I know he's gonna have one next year. But what para in this room is gonna stay for no benefits, salary decrease, and what quality para is gonna be with my son? I have done my research, and I have seen other districts that have cut the same way Lacey is planning on cut, and they have outserviced outside services to come in for paras. Have you guys researched the lawsuits against those paras that are outsourced to be with our most vulnerable students? In the view of myself and other parents of disabled children in this district, I feel you are discriminating the disabled population in this school district. It is a less than 3% budget decrease. Why are you taking that from people who are directly working with our children day in and day out? Surely, there is somewhere else in this budget you can find less than 3% than from the most vulnerable students in our district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Maria Campora. I live on Nautilus Boulevard. And since 1998, I've had a special education student benefiting from a power professional in our school district. When I got here tonight, I looked around the room, and I said, "I know her, I know her, I know him, I know them, I know them." These people aren't just here for a day and they're gone. They're dedicated. These are people that have been here with our children for the journey. How do you put a price tag on the compassion? And how do you put a price tag? How do you quantify the commitment that these people are giving to our children? As a special ed parent, they're our first line of defense. They're our eyes, they're our ears, they're our voices. When our children are unable to speak, or tell us if they left their lunch home, if they're having a meltdown, we don't know. They don't come home like, you know, well, my teenagers didn't speak, but my other kids always told me what was going on in school. It's so important that they stay respected and they stay paid. They stay well-paid because you can't put a price tag on my peace of mind. You know, when I put my child on the bus, I have to know that someone on the other end is watching out for him. They're me, you know, when I'm not here, when I can't be with them. And this is my last year in Lacey District. My son is 21 in December. So this really isn't going to impact me personally, but there are so many future generations of children that deserve the same benefit of our power professionals that my children did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Forgive me, but may I ask a question? My name is Trinity Clark. I am a senior student at this district, one of the students you are so worried about. I also have two younger siblings who both have IEPs. I myself have a 504 and have gone through this district, making friends who need paraprofessionals, making friends with paraprofessionals, who even though they are not assigned to me, still have the compassion to talk to me and help me when I need them. And I would like to know why you are pink-slipping them if you're going to simply rehire them via a process that you already used to hire them in the first place? As in going through their skills and their resumes and their credentials? Why pink-slip them and then rehire them for, using the same process? I'm just confused. Forgive me for misunderstanding.
No, that's okay. That's a great question. So what I alluded to earlier was what's called a seniority list, and that's when I talk about a process and questions that we're still working on with our labor attorney to have him provide us guidance on what exactly that means. So it is the difference between hiring back our power professionals based on seniority, how long they've been in our districts, as opposed to hiring our power professionals back on a very specific job description for which, like many of our job descriptions, have very specific qualifications. So, for example, if we were to hire a guidance counselor, there are a list of qualifications. You have to have a master's degree, you have to have the guidance certificate. Sometimes, depending on the specificity of what we're looking for, we may say, "You have to have this many years of experience." So you get the idea. So we're still in the process of determining what that's going to look like.
Okay, 'cause I just want to make sure that this is not going to negatively impact not only my friends, but my family, as my mother is a paraprofessional, a new one, and she has gotten much praise from the people she's worked with, from the parents of the people she's worked with. And she truly cares about the children that she works with as if they were my brother or sister. And we need more people like that to work here, and I see a lot of it here already. So I don't see the reason in getting rid of them and hiring them back based on what's a piece of paper versus what's in their hearts. Thank you.
And I appreciate your comments. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Alexis Ackerman.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Alexis Ackerman. I actually don't have any children in the district right now. However, I have had the amazing pleasure of working with probably everybody in this room. And I have actually two questions. One, you say, "I'm hired back." So when we're hiring back, they're gonna be terminated, hired back at the same rate, different rate? What is the rate of pay? You know, I know a lot of agencies will do that. They'll hire people back and hire them back for, you know, five, six dollars less than they started at last time.
Okay, so another great question. So when I say "hired back," it again goes back to seniority. So because right now, we're being told by our labor attorney that that is the process that we have to use because of the contract that our employees have between the Board of Education and the Lacey Township Education Association. In order to do that, all of our power professionals have to first receive what's called a reduction in force letter. And then, once that happens, then we begin the hiring back process based on what I alluded to earlier, that's based on need, without affecting the services that our students are already receiving.
And that hire back will be a compensation of what they have now?
I'm sorry, one more time?
Like compensation will be equal to what they're making now?
Well, so the paraprofessionals who are hired back full-time, is that the compensation that they're already making now with benefits, correct? And what I talked about earlier is we are exploring different hourly rates that is respectful of the hard work that our power professionals do. And in doing that, we've been talking to districts, our Director of Special Services, who I know is here tonight, has been having many conversations with districts who have similar models to come up with those hourly rates. So we've seen that range, anywhere between $10 an hour and $18 an hour. And that's, those are some rates that we've been looking at. And I'm just telling you what the range is out there. I'm not saying, I'm not gonna throw out a number because we're not quite there yet.
One more question. You said that our students with IEPs will have a para. Does that mean they will have a consistent para, the same para like they have now? All year long, they're the same person? Or is that where the subs and the temporary staff are gonna come in, where they're gonna have somebody different every day in that lack of consistency?
Right. So that's gonna require an audit of all of our IEPs to look at the needs of our most significant students. Those students who are receiving services consistently are going to continue to receive services consistently, that will not change.
The same level of services?
The same level of services.
Because you're not gonna tell me that a part-timer that doesn't know them can give them that same level of care?
The same level of services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're new to the district this year. This is the first year that we've had children in the district. I have currently two IEPs and a 504 plan for my children. One is out of district and one is in the middle school. Coming from a parent who has been in other districts that have gone through this same exact process, I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of my own personal experience. I gotta say, first off, since we've been here, it has honestly been an amazing year for my son that needs the power professionals. It has been the best year he's had ever since he's been in school. And I think it's because of the power professionals that are working with him and his teachers and staff. I can see clearly that the teachers and the paras care about my child. It's the first time he's ever been to school and has honestly come home, and he says, "These people care about me." And they really do. So I want to just tell you about some experiences we've had in other districts that have done this, where they don't have the consistency of the paras. I had a kid that was in crisis. Every other month, I was getting a phone call from the school because my kid is running out of the classroom, because my kid is doing something else or another, constantly. I spent years doing this. I have worked very hard with my child, and I've worked very hard with the school districts up until this point. And honestly, Lacey is the first one that has truly shown that they care about my kid. And with that being said, I also am a teacher, and I'm a substitute teacher and a power professional, and I've worked for these outside companies that you outsourced to. And I can tell you from firsthand knowledge, they are not trained. They are not trained to deal with our children. I do it because I have three of my own special needs children, and I know what is required and what is needed. These people that I work with on a daily basis do not know, and they are not trained. And the companies that outsource to them do not train these people. And these are the people that you do not want working with your children, because in the end, it's just gonna cost you more than what you're gonna be saving right now. Now, with that being said, I did have a couple of questions about the layoffs and the pink slips. How many paraprofessionals are currently employed at Lacey?
Eighty, give or take. Seventy, eight, eighty.
Okay. How many of those are full-time?
Thirty. Most of them. Most.
Most, as in sixty? Sixty-five? I mean, you're saying seventy or eighty?
Most, as in sixty to seventy.
How many of those are, how many of those get the benefits? Are they, all the full-time employees get the benefits?
Yeah.
How many are you planning on rehiring at full-time of those that you're giving pink slips to?
So we don't have that information right now?
When will you have that? Will you have it before the next board meeting?
I'm gonna go with the percentages that we talked about. The goal is 35 to 45% of them will be hired back based on, as Dr. Clark said, individual IEP, state mandate, and need.
Okay, so you're gonna, you're gonna cut the force and only bring back 30 to 45% without the benefits? And then you're expecting part-times or replacement workers to come in and work with our children for the rest?
Yeah. The 45 number, that 45%, they get hired back at the same rate of pay with the same level of benefit.
So less than half that you're laying off is gonna come back?
It's not an exact number right now.
Okay. Do the part-time employees right now that are getting the pink slip participate in the benefit package?
No.
Do they get benefits now?
They do not, right? What's that? No, not part-time employees. You can take.
Not part-time.
Per diem powers? Per diem powers do not get benefits.
Okay, so you have per diem powers and part-time powers and full-time powers, or just full-time and per diem?
We have full-time powers. Uh-huh. And we have per diem powers.
And part-time.
And part-time.
We have several part-time. But we're talking.
Sorry, can you hear me now? We have full-time powers, per diem powers, and several part-time powers.
Okay. And the per diem and part-time do not get the benefits?
That is correct.
Okay. Have you guys done a cost analysis yet? You guys have already handed out the pink slip, so do you have a cost analysis that you can show us on how, where you're gonna save and how much you're gonna save doing this? Or is that part of what you're talking to the attorney about?
You wanna take that? The number of savings right now is roughly $1.1 million.
And where did you get this number from? Do you have a cost analysis?
That's a packed question, but he can tell you how he arrived at that number.
Sure. The, it's the salary of those who might not come back, plus mostly the benefits of those who would be losing benefits. Yes.
Okay, so you didn't do a cost analysis of it, you just kinda guessed at what it was? Or do you have a report that says?
Yes.
This is what it is?
No, no. Yeah, nobody guesses, it's very scientific based upon the data that we have available to us for paras, is there a report?
Then you should have a report on it, I mean, if it's.
No, I shouldn't have a report, and I don't, I don't, there is no report yet, we're telling you that the value.
So, you don't know that you're going to be saving money in the long run by doing this?
I'm sorry?
So, you don't know in the long run that you're actually going to be saving money by laying all these people off?
I'm not.
But you haven't done a cost analysis, so how do you know that you're actually going to be saving money? How do you know how much you're going, you know, if you haven't figured out how much you're going to rehire them at, or how much you're going to outsource, you know, to the other workers at, how do you know that you're actually going to be saving money?
At this point, we do, at this point, that's the, that's the prediction, I kind of, I just said, really it's a combination of salary and mostly benefits. I'm sorry, what do you, I don't understand, what costs?
I think that, I think she's asking what costs to the students, because it clearly is, it is a cost to the students, I have seen it firsthand, it is a true cost to the students.
Listen, we're doing an analysis of the numbers right now, okay? Keep in mind that this is a tentative budget, nothing's getting passed tonight.
Oh, I know it's a tentative budget, that's why I was asking.
Nothing's getting passed tonight, so I'm actually looking at numbers right now, spreadsheet, where we've done some initial analysis as to the cost savings.
So, will you have a report before the next meeting, so we can look at it and review the numbers?
I'm certain that when we do a final budget, that there's going to be an exact number as to the amount that we're going to save.
But when you have the exact budget, we can't really talk about it.
Listen, a lot, most of this depends on S2, right? We talked about the budget decreases, you could have a miracle where something happens and we're not in this position, I'm going to make another statement too, we're talking to the labor attorney, and we still need to negotiate with the teachers' union, with the LTEA, if there's a way that we can fix this and save it, all right, I think we would try to do that, I think all seven of us up here would try to do that.
I would really hope you would.
Okay, we're trying to do the best we can with the amount of money, you saw it, 4.7 million over the next six years, it's gotten to the point where we just can't pull a little from here, pull a little from there, we have to look at some serious things, all right?
And I understand that, and I appreciate that.
And I, listen, guys, I'm going to say this, you can come up and you could speak, but when you start yelling out individual things, it's going to take longer, you're not going to be able to get your point across, and you all deserve the opportunity to speak and make your point, so just please come up, don't yell things out, it's going to make this go a lot smoother and quicker, all right?
I just had one, one other question about one of the budget lines that, when you said that the, with the special needs, the services, I think it was, the service line, is that the total cost that Lacey is paying to send students out of district, or is that in a different part of the budget?
It's in, it's a combination, sorry, it's a combination, but it is the related services component of.
So, those related services are not like speech and OT and PT that you do in-house?
It includes that, but the reduction is really based on our projection that we're going to need less related services out, which are more expensive, so yes, it's definitely a direct result of that.
So, your plan is to bring more out-of-district students back in district?
Well, it's not, I'm not the instructional person, and we're not trying to bring anyone back to save money, that's got to be clear, whatever is best for students is what's, is what we're going to do, it just so happens that, working with Mr. Bond and his department, it does seem that a combination of people who are aging out of the system, plus those, we think, a little bit less, we're going to send to regular school districts for special education, it looks like we're going to spend less on out-of-district costs.
Do you know how many students in that part of the budget are going to be aging out this year that are in out-of-district placements?
I do not have that information with me, but if you leave your email, I will definitely get it for you.
Sure, thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Dawn Kramer, and I have a daughter with tris and me twenty-one, who's in preschool, now, does part-time paras, will they be back?
Did you hear the question, part-time paras, will they be back?
I'm sorry, are you talking specifically the part-time para that's working with your child?
Yes, I would like to know if my daughter is going to have the same aid, because she's doing great with her.
Right, so the services that your daughter is receiving are going to be the exact services your daughter is going to be receiving moving forward? I can't answer the question about seniority, because I told you that we are still working with our labor attorney, hold on, let me finish, to determine how it is that we're going to bring our paraprofessionals back, I know you want the answer, I simply don't have it right here, right now, it is a process, we are working on that process, and I hope to have very specific information the next couple of days, the next couple of weeks, and I know how frustrating that is, because you all want a very specific answer, and I can't give you that very specific answer, but I can assure you that all of our students who are receiving services are going to continue to receive those services.
You say, "Children come first," right?
Children come first.
My daughter, she's doing great with her para, she has a hard time adjusting to people, trusting people, and I want to feel comfortable of her having the same para through summer preschool next year, and then years from now, because she's doing great with her, and for her to learn, she has to feel comfortable with the person she's with, and for her to go to the bathroom and be potty-trained, she has to be with the person she feels comfortable with, which she is with her para, she's not like that with everybody.
We understand, and I know how hard it was for you to come up here and say that, and I appreciate you doing that.
"Children come first," you wouldn't be doing this. My name is Renee Stracuzzi, I have a daughter in kindergarten at Forkett River School, who requires a one-on-one para, she has been attending Lacey since preschool, she was diagnosed with type 1 diabetes at the age of two, she requires someone to monitor her 24/7, so when she's not with me, she's with her para, her para does everything for her, she's like a nurse, she's underpaid para. For those of you that are not familiar with type 1 diabetes, it's an autoimmune disease, and it's very life-threatening, my daughter is at risk every day of coma or seizure, so high and low blood sugars will cause that, it is imperative that she stays in a normal blood sugar range, Ms. Holmberg is her para at Forkett River School, and we're in contact all day, she checks her blood sugar, she knows how to work her insulin pump, her glucose monitor that she wears, she recognizes her symptoms, she knows her very well, she's had her since preschool, so about two years now that she's been working with her, I have very high expectations who's with my child when I'm not with her, so I will not accept another para, this is the only para that knows how to take care of my child, I do not have time to train a new one, I spent several months training Ms. Leann when my daughter started preschool, I cannot do that now, I have another child, she knows everything what to do, if I send her to school and there's no nurse, I know Ms. Holmberg can take care of her, if not, my daughter has to miss school, that's unfair, there's untrained nurses, untrained nurses in this district, untrained substitute nurses, and I will not accept anyone outsourced to take care of my child, I will call the Diabetes Association, I will go to Ocean County and get an advocate, I will get a lawyer from JDRF.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brandy Rapatsky, and I have, I live on Alpine, 1023 Alpine Street, I have three boys in the school district, two with IEPs in Cedar Creek, my youngest one, Theodore, is in kindergarten, and his para is Mrs. Tomasi, who's in the back, my child did not go to the bathroom or eat for a year and a half in school, do you know how long the days are for a five-year-old not to use the bathroom? It's a long day, and not to eat anything, he suffers from severe anxiety, it took Mrs. Tomasi, I don't know, maybe the first week of school this year, and he was using the bathroom, now he's eating lunch in the cafeteria, I wanted to buy her a car, and you gave her a pink slip. I, I happen to be a math professor at Stockton University, so I'm a numbers girl, and you guys keep talking about consistency, that my, my child will still receive the same level of care, and I'm just not sure how that's possible if only thirty-five to forty-five percent of these paraprofessionals are going to be hired back full-time with benefits, I seriously am at a loss. It's, it's not possible to, that they will all be receiving the same level that they are right now, there's just no way, all of these paraprofessionals deserve more, so much more, oh my God, so much more, and I just, I just hate, it reminds me of the kindergarten program, my oldest child happened to not win the lottery, so he didn't get to go to full day, and a third of the kids did, and I had a board of people telling me that my child wasn't getting less, well, sometimes more really is more, and I hated being spoken to, kind of like I was an idiot, like, you're telling all of us the same level of care, they're going to make way less money, but I assure you it's going to be the same, and I'm just, that is just not physically possible.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Joshua Getzberg, I have been a student in this school district for the past 12 years, I'm a senior this year, I have been through special ed up until about sixth grade, and I have seen and met many paras in my entire time in this district, still throughout high school. I just want to ask a few questions, what is the exact reasoning behind the budget cut?
The, the state government is pulling these funds from all the public schools in New Jersey, all right, over the next eight years, not all, some, some are actually getting money, right? So, it's the state government that's repositioning these funds based on enrollment, right? So, does that answer your question?
Somewhat.
Okay.
And how much is going back into the paras for money, like, how much is going to be given, like?
I think what you're trying to ask is, how much would we be saving as a district by potentially doing what we're talking about doing?
Yes.
Is that the question?
Yes.
It's about 1.19 million?
And you're only keeping thirty-five percent, or forty-five?
The, the numbers are not exact yet, okay, it's a thirty-five to forty-five percent range.
And you can't pull any funding from anything else?
I want to, give me a minute to find something, because I want to read you an email, parts of an email, that came from the county office, okay? County office, idea where, the county leadership team, just give me a minute, because it's important, it's in here somewhere. You might be able to find it before me. Where? Yeah, no, I have it printed, I got it. This is coming from the county office, and this is important, that you guys should, should understand what's being given to us as suggestions about how we should save money, cut teaching staff, right? Cut teaching staff, so you think about the amount of money and the deficit that we're going to incur over the next six years, think about the number of teachers that we'd have to cut, I think the last thing anybody on this stage wants to do is cut teachers.
I can name a few.
Cut programs. Hey, hey, guys, I'm going to tell you right now, if you want to be disrespectful and laugh at what I'm reading you, you know, this can go one of two ways, all right? One of the fourth things that came down from the county office was paraprofessionals, and doing, or consider doing, what we're talking about doing right now. I want to go to that, those notes, I'll just say this, in the surrounding districts, we are one of the last districts that manage our paraprofessionals the way we do, listen, guys, we know how important the jobs that you do are, okay? And quite frankly, when the woman came up and said, "Want to buy her a car," yeah, you know what, she deserves a car, or he deserves a car for doing that job, all right? But when you're talking about the level of cuts coming from the state, there's really not many other places that we can look, we could eliminate freshmen in JV sports and combine them, we can combine sports with another district. Now, think about that for a minute, this is all coming from the county office, so this is not necessarily my views or opinions, but think about that for a minute, about all the people that play sports, and now they're left without activities to do after school. Right? If you're talking about doing things for the kids, think, just consider all these things that are coming down from the office.
How much?
You can, I'm sure you have more questions, so you can answer them, ask them.
What is the percentage of the budget that goes into sports or other activities for the school?
The total's less than a million.
Okay, and how much does the board make?
This board?
Yes.
You know, you know how much time I make, you know how much money I make doing this? I actually lose money doing this, right? Because if, because I'm going to tell you something, you really don't understand the amount of time that all of us as volunteers put into this, okay?
This is volunteer.
And you, and honestly, it's probably a good, a good transition for you, Frank, because you were on the other side last year, and now you understand how much time is invested in this position, again, it's volunteer, we make zero, so Frank, if you want to talk a little bit, go ahead, good time. If I could just beg everybody's indulgence for just a few minutes, I've been sitting here, and my heart's being ripped out as I'm listening to what's going on here, and I ran for the board, and I promised everybody who said they were going to vote for me, that I would always put students first in every decision I made, beyond that, once I started to run, I had many parents of special needs children approach me and tell me some of the difficulties they've had, tell me some of their heartfelt stories of what they went through, and it's extremely, extremely important to me, when the finance committee told me about the problem with the budget and some of the solutions that they were looking at, I asked lots of pointed questions, one of the answers I got back, and I haven't had an opportunity to fully research it yet, is that if we cut the sports that we just talked about, it would save $100,000. I think one of the most important things here, though, is that something I didn't understand, that I now understand, and I hope I can help everybody else with it, in our district, when we talk about paraprofessionals, we're not talking about what most of the people tonight spoke about as paras, or at least not only, we have almost eighty paraprofessionals, some of them are bus monitors, and while that's a very noble job, and it's a good job, they are, they are contracted as paraprofessionals.
as par professionals. In most districts, they are part-time employees who do not receive benefits. Now, one of the things that I asked my fellow board members and Patrick and Dr. Clark was that if we were going to do this, if we were going to, RIF is the term they use, I feel it's a pretty cold term, all of our par professionals with the intent of bringing people back as full-time or part-time, were we going to be able to assure that the par who was with a special needs child one-on-one would be with that same child when they came back? And I insisted that that's what I wanted, but we do have one problem with that, but I'm very happy to see the turnout tonight and all the teachers that turned out because you hold the answer in your hands. They're researching a little bit more for me because I'm pushing very hard on this, but I am told that the Lacey Township Teachers Union can give us a one-time concession that would allow us to hire back paras based on their skill set, their credentials, and their resume. In other words, if you have a par who's with your child now, we could say that par must be hired back to be with that child. Unfortunately, the way the contract is currently structured, it doesn't allow for that. In theory, somebody who's a bus monitor who has more seniority than the par professional who's with that special needs child could potentially bump that person and take over that job. Now, as Dr. Clark said, the district would give that person the proper training to hopefully get them up to speed. But I looked in the eyes of parents who came and talked to me who had special needs children. I don't think that's good enough. I feel that that special needs child should have the person they're used to. And I'm begging, I'm imploring the union president and the union, give those kids that opportunity, okay? One time. Don't stand on principle of seniority over maybe 20 part-time employees, okay? Let's look out for the most vulnerable children among us. I'm probably going to get in trouble for saying this because you're not supposed to say these nowadays, but it's my opinion. I listen to a higher authority and what he told me is whatsoever you do to the least of my people, that you do unto me, okay? And we have the opportunity, we have the opportunity to work together as a board, as a district, and as a union to do what's right and best for the students. And we can do that. We can have both here. The whole savings you're talking about, I don't feel that it was explained well enough and I think Dr. Clark did a great job explaining it, but I don't, sometimes I have a way of breaking things down a little bit simpler. Almost 80 people, some of them are part-time, some of them are full-time, some of them could be a bus monitor, a research room person, or a one-on-one par professional. We should have the ability to hire back the one-on-one par professionals, full-time, with benefits, with full pay, and let them stay with our most vulnerable, most needy children. That's what I want and this union membership has the ability to give it. I sat here and listened to some of the people's impassioned speeches when they were going through the contract negotiations and I heard how much our teachers love our children. I heard from them how much they do this job for the love of the children and I know that they're going to be willing to do that. Because the options just aren't very good. And I'm going to tell you right now, I'll say it on the record, I know there's reporters in the audience here, if we have to riff our par professionals and bring back paras one-on-one who are not, do not have the credentials and do not have the experience with our children, I will resign this board, okay? And I will make a public statement and there might be people who might not like what I have to say. So it's time to stop the nonsense, okay, and work together for the best of the children. I would like to have the superintendent, the board president, meet with the union president, let's get that signed concession, let's do what's right for our students because that's what we're here for, that's what these teachers come here for, okay? Because the other option is privatization and they haven't taken that off the table, I got news for you. And that would be the worst thing for our students and it'd be the worst thing for the teachers' union. Losing 80 dues-paying members and losing all the benefits would be with a stroke of a pen to go to privatization. We don't need to do that. We can keep this and protect our students, protect the most vulnerable amongst us, okay? Make sure that the one-on-one paras have an opportunity to be with the people that they've been working with, getting full-time, getting benefits, and the district still gets the savings. I just, I really, I feel bad for the few people that would become part-time in that, but I have to look out for the students first and I think that's a fair answer for everybody.
I would like to remind you that with these hypothetical numbers, you say you're looking out for the students, but those hypothetical 60 to 70% of the paras that are not going to come back full-time with their benefits also have children too, me being one of them, and that will also affect my home life and my education. Par, our family.
Hi, Ed Scanlon, Barnegat Pines. I have a couple of, I get a little confused with the numbers when they're just being rattled out, but maybe the business administrator could help me? I want to know, if the tax rate goes up a cent, what does that generate in terms of dollars? I was on a township committee years ago and that's how we used to figure budgets.
Right, I know. So it's, hold on one second, I'll tell you.
That was always, that was the key number, I'm surprised.
Yeah, so, 1%.
No, 1 cent. For the tax rate to go up 1 cent, what does that generate dollar-wise for the budget?
Alright, so it is 470,000, thereabouts.
470,000?
Right, thereabouts.
Okay. I like the round number, that's good. We're going to go through with this plan that you have. It's going to save 1.1 million. Am I right so far?
Yes.
Numbers that were given before, if I copied them down correctly, if I didn't, correct me please, I believe that you're losing 623,156 in state aid.
In categorical state aid, yes.
Well then, how come the paras are losing twice that?
Right, it's a good question. So, right, it's a good question. So, it doesn't correspond directly. So, paras is one line item in the entire appropriations side of the budget, state aid is another. They don't necessarily cor, you should know that from your township days, they don't correspond, every dollar revenue doesn't correspond directly to that. Because remember, in addition to reductions in revenue, there are increases in contractual obligations that the district has to pay. Property casualty insurance, heat, light, and power, all the things that it takes to run the district, those costs increase as much as we try to contain them. So the combination of decreased revenue and increased cost equals your 1.1 million dollars. Does that make sense?
Well, no, it doesn't.
Doesn't? Sorry to hear.
And I'll tell you why, why I don't, why, where you lose me. And you lose me because in this budget, we're saving 1.1 million by taking this reduction of force and you're saying that if we had 623,000 more, it wouldn't reduce the 1.1 million.
I didn't say that, I didn't say that. If we had 600.
Well, then, that's the reason that I said.
So if we had 600,000 more, if we didn't have the state aid reduction, we would have that much more to solve what was a 1.1 million budget deficit. Does that make sense? So, down to a half a million.
Yeah, well, I think you have a 1.1 million budget deficit, but not all of it's because of the state aid.
That's right.
Oh, very good. Then why can't you, why is it just coming out? And the other thing is that, the other question I have, and I, I mean, I don't want to get into a lengthy thing because I'll only get confused as you throw numbers at me, so let me just ask this. With the state aid being reduced, the 2% cap, is that on tax dollars or is that on budget?
That's on tax dollars.
Now, okay, so in order to go over the 2%, if you did that, you'd have to have a vote by the public, right?
Yes.
Okay, so if you added 3 cents per hundred, you would cover the 1.1 million and I bet all the people here would support that election. And you would be out of the room. To me, to me, it's like.
You might be right.
Who are we protecting here? Are we protecting like the, the cranky taxpayer in the, I don't want to say retirement community because I would be there if I didn't live in a regular community, but I mean, who are we protecting? For 3 cents per hundred, you could solve the problem and I, like I said, I bet every one of these people would get out there and knock on doors to support.
Right, so that, we, we currently adopt the resolution that we do not put the budget out to a vote. So, we, as I mentioned before, if the board had the ability to raise taxes through waivers, which we don't, or banked cap, which we do not have available to us in this coming budget year, the board would certainly have done that. But as it is, that's not available to us. So you're saying that we should maybe risk even the 2% by putting the budget out to a vote, where really it could happen where we could actually lose money?
Well, actually what you do is you put it out for 5 cent increase and when the township, when it turns down and the township committee negotiates with you, you can negotiate it down to 3.
Yeah, I'm well aware of the process.
Right, so am I.
Yes.
In other words, you could solve the problem. I have a grandson, by the way, who's special needs, CP, and if he loses his aid, I'm with all these other people. He's not going to be able to function. He can't, he's had this person for a number of years, she does a wonderful job, and if Ms. Nadine's not in the school, Jacob's not, he can't handle it. And I mean, so you're not talking, and the other thing too, with reducing paras, just to put it into perspective of every parent in the school, not just, and I think it was said once before, if you take the paras away, you're taking teaching time away because now the teacher's responsible for the students that have the aids. And you've just destroyed the education process and everything, every one of you ran on was to make this a better district and you won't be making it a better district. So you need to think about that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Welcome, Ryan President, LTA. I'm here tonight to discuss the proposed budget for the 1920 school year. There's no way the LTA can support this budget in its current form. Included in this budget is a riff of our par professionals and elimination of positions. These cuts would have a catastrophic effect on the special needs students, as you heard tonight, as well as our general education students of Lacey. The role of a par professional is without a doubt one of the most complex in the district.
Are these, are these the numbers? These are the actual numbers? And guidance answers. So what is the actual percentage?
Almost 5. Is it?
I'm going there. I'm going there.
He did?
I'm going there. I'm going there.
I need water.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let's see. The role of a par professional in this district is without a doubt one of the most complex. Many people don't realize all the things our paras do on a daily, weekly, monthly, even yearly basis. They are, for lack of a better term, a jack or a jill, if you will, of all trades. From anything to working with our one-on-one students, in our district sometimes it's two or even a three-on-one, working with students reading, writing, math skills, behavioral skills, social skills, medical issues, toileting, supervision, assist with testing, provide valuable input for IEP construction, and in some cases, cover class instruction as subs. And these are just to name a few. I know the board will consider these cuts a necessity for the economic shortcomings of the district and I do understand that these shortcomings aren't completely on the district and that there have been changes on the state level which have affected this. But I'm here to say the remedy to these shortcomings can no longer be on the backs of the staff of this district. In recent years, we've seen the elimination of our contracted health aides, the elimination of our contracted cafeteria staff. A majority of our BSI teachers who work with some of the most needy students reduced to part-time positions. And yes, these cuts have had an effect on our students. This membership has shouldered the burden over the years and can no longer do so. I know the board may think, well, didn't you guys just settle a good contract? Yes, we did and we are thankful for our settlement. But please, make no mistakes. Concessions were given, like a change in our medical plan which the board wanted in order to save money. We also deferred money in the amount of 750,000 with regard to our advanced degrees to prevent any staff cuts. And yet here we are tonight, blindsided, discussing staff cuts. People have said to me, don't take it personal, it's a business. Okay, let's think about it as a business, shall we? The most successful businesses in the world are those that invest in their people, in our case, staff. Making investments in your staff leads to making a better product, in this case, our students. Our students need the best to be the best they can be. Aren't we worth it? Aren't they worth it? As a board, I would implore you to reassess the budget and seek to make changes elsewhere. One where staff cuts that would affect our students are not included. I will leave with this. Moments ago, I asked a question, but I already know the answer. They are worth it and we are worth it. Now, that was the script that I had written and I wanted to address Mr. Horvath's comments with regards to this waiver that you spoke of or assigning people based on their skill set. So I know you're newly elected to the board, but let me educate you as to what this membership has shouldered over the years. 2009, this district took a freeze, which split this district down the middle. And because of that freeze, we are still thousands of dollars behind where other districts are in the county, as I'm sure you're well aware of. As far as the reason why seniority clauses exist in contracts such as this is so that we are in an economic crisis, as you referred to it, and what would stop you from taking a par that's been in the district 20 years, making 20,000 and eliminating them to hire somebody in at, two people at $10,000? That's the reason why these seniority clauses are in there. Another part of this history lesson, I think, that some of the board members might not be aware of, and I wasn't inclined to go here, but just after what I've heard tonight has really, really kicked it up a notch, is about five, six years ago, the union went to district leadership at the time and asked about having specialized par job descriptions. Sounds like common sense, right? Have an individualized behavior par, par for autistic class support, sounds like a no-brainer. Here's the reason why it wasn't done. Because we are already at a shortage of paras. We don't have enough paras to cover the needs of our students that we currently have. So by doing that, you're eliminating the district's ability. They would take a par from this room to cover this room or cover this room. Once you start to specialize, that's it. And raise your hand if you're in this crowd, if you're a par that's pulled from your regular assignment on a regular basis. It's a normal thing. So to answer your question, I don't disagree with you in the logic of to have a skilled par or that particular par with it, but there's a reason why that language exists, okay? And I look forward to working with the board to seek cuts elsewhere in this budget that would not come at the cost of the staff. Thank you.
My name is Barbara Bowen. I live on Devon Street in Forkard River. I've lived here since 1974. I have been retired as a teacher for 10 years from this district. I taught for 10 years. I taught for 29 years here. This district was one of the best. In the 10 years that I have been retired, I'm still very involved. I'm involved with the Ocean County Retired Education Association, so I know what's going on in the county, and I hear a lot. And what I've been hearing over the last nine years breaks my heart. Because what I've heard is how Lacey Township as a school district has really dropped, and I'm well aware of that. And I know exactly which districts are much, much better, and I'm not going to name them. But it breaks my heart that the district that I spent so much time and energy in is where it is today. And what you are talking about doing now just puts another nail in the coffin, because we're doing nothing but going down, and down, and down. There's got to be another way.
I'm Amory Lighter. I live in the woods of Bamber. Some of you guys know me. Hi. I don't have a child, thank you, Jesus, with special needs, but I am a sub in your school district. And when you talk about laying off or cutting powers, every day, my phone rings at 5:00 in the morning, you know, with the auto robot, do I want a sub? And I press two to go away, and then I look online, because I want to see who is looking for work. Because truthfully, a couple of years ago, at Cedar Creek, there was a special needs kid, and I, not even a para, I was the gatekeeper, the button clicker at Cedar Creek, and I would get pulled from my job there to be a para in a classroom. And this one boy, God bless him, he was a handful. And in fact, when he did escape the classroom, as the gatekeeper, I was asked to guard the front door. Everybody had all the doors manned, and I just don't understand, I don't want to get too carried away, how are you going to cut jobs when you don't even have enough people to fill these jobs? These people, these paras, I mean, I'm sure you must have a sense of what they do, and everybody's been talking about it, but you really don't know until you're in that seat, looking at a child who is dependent on you. And it's not just one person, and I'm not even trained. I mean, I'm a housewife, I'm a massage therapist, I coach basketball and softball, but I'm a compassionate person, and I don't accept sub work as a para anymore because it's too much for me. These paras, my God, they deserve respect. You're not even giving them respect that they deserve. It's a shame. I'm here as a parent of, I guess, a mainstream, or, you know, whatever, kid, and I'm here tonight because I feel bad for my brother and sister paras. I just feel awful for them. And I hope that you would just reconsider and think about what you're doing. I'm not asking you to cut sports, but there's got to be a better way. There just has to be. These kids need more, and our paras deserve more respect than I think what you're giving them. Thank you.
Thank you.
As you know, I address you all the time when I'm in town. What I've been listening to seems to me that there's, yeah, there should be a better way, and you know the way I feel, give it all extracurriculars and give it to the teachers, okay? Give it to the people who are with the kids. I don't care about sports, I don't care about drama club, I don't care about chess club, math, I don't care about any of that. I want to see the money spent in the classroom so that our rating is above 50%, ranked in a school, and none of our schools are ranked above 50% with the thing that just came out this week. But, seems to me that there's contract language issues here, okay? Basically, I think that your, is your HR legal attorney looking at write a first refusal? Is he looking at, okay, with different levels, different levels of employment based on qualification and therefore pay grade, who's able to bid on specific jobs? Is there time limits on those bids, so a person can refuse that job? Is there a bumping system where if you refuse the job, say, after 30 days of being in the job, I can be bumped by somebody who has more seniority at a higher grade but is willing to take less pay? See, what I'm saying to you is, is there more, is there more flexibility that can be negotiated into the language in the contract that would give seniority a share of what you're trying to accomplish by making it more flexible if the person who has a seniority is willing to give up the rights they have of that seniority to go and be a paralegal for this particular child? Then it would be up to their fellow union members, which, you know, union members are union members, and I've negotiated many contracts, but the point comes down to if the, if the union member who has the right to the job is willing to give up the job based on a language of seniority that has the flexibility so that the person could take the job where they want to be with this kid, or have been with this kid, is that kind of language being built into the contract by your attorney? Are you looking outside the box of the definition of seniority in such a way to make it more flexible, so that the actual members of the collective bargaining unit could have more decision-making process as to where they want to work and at what salaries? That's all. Thank you for your time.
I'd just like to say, my name is Richard Bidnick, by the way. I know change is difficult, but this, this school district will survive, and everything will eventually work out, one way or another. We always know it does. We've been through changes, through history in our country, that have been difficult at times, and in the end, we turned out to be better. I'm just, just reminding everybody, instead of getting all hysterical right away, we don't even know the entire facts of exactly what they're going to be doing. We don't know the numbers, they haven't come up with their entire plan, so give them a chance to do their job. On another note, I will not be commenting on any of these things tonight, I have other issues on my agenda. When I was here in October and I spoke, I had asked about the Janus decision, and how the school district was implementing employees' rights about the Janus decision. Can someone explain to me what's happening with that? I know that the New Jersey School Board Association came out and gave, you know, information, and they did programs and stuff about, you know, how schools can implement the school board and the administration. I was just wondering, I know when I spoke to Mrs. Clark, that you had said that you would have an answer. That was set five months ago, I was wondering if you have an answer for me now?
So, I actually just had a recent conversation with the union leadership on the Janus decision. I do not have my notes here in front of me, Mr. Bidnick, but what I'm going to ask for you to do is to come see me.
Okay, sure.
And I will share that information with you.
Okay, that'd be perfect. Thank you so much. Okay, several years ago, on the old school board site, the salaries of all employees were listed, along with what the taxpayers were contributing for each employee's social security, health insurance premiums, pension costs, unused sick and personal leave days, et cetera. I'm requesting that this information, again, be posted to the new website. Many individuals do not realize what these hidden costs are, and they are actually quite substantial.
Mr. Bidnick, that information's on the website?
It is.
It's there?
Yes. Sure.
If you look on the main page of our website, you'll see the user-friendly budget, and within that document, it'll list costs for certain staff members who are not aligned to a union.
Everything good is a fight, you know that.
Frank, go ahead. Enjoy.
So I, I always support merit pay, because I believe our country is a meritocracy, and that's the way I do things in my business. The one thing that I've learned in the very short time I've been a board member is that what happens in the real world doesn't happen in the state of New Jersey necessarily, particularly under our current leadership. 75 to 80% of everything this board does is mandated by the state and beyond our control.
Right.
So I'm, so that's how I feel about it. Mr. Ryan, with what you had said, I, please don't misunderstand me, I'm not looking for the union to give up something they have without some sort of compromise. You know, I would be 100% against the nonsense that you described, and I guess it could happen, you know? I'm only one of, one of seven board members, so I can only speak, and I can only speak to you in this time. Legally, I can't speak to you on behalf of the board when I'm not sitting up here, but I can tell you that I, I'd be shocked if the other board members would allow that to be manipulated. And I think there can be a carve-out where you get your protections that you need, which makes sense. And what you said, quite frankly, I never even thought of, because I wouldn't think like that, you know? But I think there can be a carve-out where you can get that protection, but you can give something back that we can all then take to do what everybody here said tonight. And I listened to the teachers who spoke, I listened to the powers who spoke, I listened to the teachers who spoke during the contract negotiation, and I feel that our teachers love our children. And I know it's not the best-paying job in the world, and you have to love what you're doing to do it. And I think that cuts are inevitable. I don't like it. Trust me, this is hard for me, coming into a situation where I can't control everything like that. I'm not used to that, okay? But I have a feeling that no matter what happens, the riff of the powers and hiring back, and not so much the cuts, I don't think everybody clearly understands that. The most, I think the biggest savings, if I'm understanding correctly, is, and I'm going to abstain tonight on my vote, because I don't understand it all completely yet, but is the savings of the benefits of the part-time people. You know, and that might sound harsh, I know that someone mentioned to me, hey, what if it was you who were losing your full-time job and your part-time benefits? And I get it, you know? I've had to let people go in my business that I loved, you know, but sometimes you've got to make decisions for the good of everybody. But I think that we can make sure that we protect the full-time employees and the powers who've put so much in with our, with our most needy children. And we can have some sort of carve-out that also gives the union membership, rank-and-file and leadership, the protections that you're looking for to address what you mentioned to me, and I think that's a valid point.
Back down the line. Okey-dokey.
No.
No.
You good?
Later.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Mike Pulick, over on Three Niagara Court. Got a son who has an IEP, and I just wanted to reiterate kind of what everybody else said, you know? He's come a long way from where he started. I know you guys are, it's my first meeting, so I appreciate the job that you guys do, and I can understand, when you say they're getting paid, you know, how hard it is, and it's a thankless job sometimes, right? And I see, you know, it's very adversarial, but I think one thing that I wanted everybody to take away was something that you mentioned earlier, that we, we do need to kind of make our voices heard at a higher level, call the governor's office, tell them how we disapprove of this, right? But by the same token, I think we can also have some give and take that was discussed before. So I think we really all got to come together, and we're very entrenched, but, you know, one of the questions I did have was, you know, why is it that, your presentation was good, but I think on the budget, though, but maybe less than transparent in some ways, more summary level, right? So we really didn't get a good idea as to where we were thinking the cuts could be made, right? So if, if that was be, was able to be provided, maybe everybody here would understand a little bit better, you know, what were we looking at, right? So you guys are looking at cutting the powers and saving 1.1 million, you know, but what else did we look at? Because I'm sure, you know, I'm a finance guy too. I know you run a bunch of different scenarios, you're going to do a reduction in force, you look at both sides, and you know exactly what you're going to be looking at, right? But what were the other things, you know? Were there administrative cuts that were looked at? Why is it always right back to the most needy, or everybody here has said the same thing? These are our most needy people, but why is it that we're looking, it seems, to cut there first, instead of to find another solution?
Right. That's actually an excellent question. So, if I did not make this clear, my apologies to you, but understand, and I know you do, because you're a finance person, right? We didn't just land on this as a first-last resort. We continually cut administration. As I said, you know, in, total administration went up only 1%, where in past years it's gone up 5% or 6% because we have made significant cuts in administrative costs across the central office component of administrative cost, right? We cut supplies, we try to cut the cost of insurance where we can, we try to, to do a better job of negotiating with our vendors to get the lowest possible price. So every single area of the budget, and there are dozens and dozens of pages of minute detail, which unfortunately, we do summarize, because that's, again, the Department of Education, not, not us, that sets that guidelines, but every single area was looked at. We are doing without curriculum that we need at the middle school in world history and science, because that we thought was fair, because we wanted to make sure that we cut everything we possibly cut. At the end of all of that, all of that months of looking at it, we were down to that. So if it seems that that was not the case, that's my fault for not trying to, not explaining it as well as I might have, but understand, please, that every single line item in a, dozens of pages of budget appropriations was looked at to cut where we could.
And the single cost driver being, you know, personnel costs, obviously, right?
It is. I mean, and welcome to your first board meeting.
Thanks.
If you've heard us talk about budget before, you'll have heard us say that compensation and benefits comprises 75 to 80% of a budget. So yeah, it's, it's a huge factor, which if you looked at it another way, we have 20% of cost to control, and not even, all of those are controllable because of contractual obligations we have for internet, wide-area network, all those types of costs that I said are, we have no control over. So it's, what we have control over, we're trying our best to control.
And I would just say, like, you know, when I think of my personal life, the first thing that I kind of look to cut is the discretionary-type spending. So would it be a crisis if we cut out and made people pay for sports? I mean, you know, look, I've worked out with Tom in the past, you know, we, we go way back with that, but the first thing I would stop doing if it was a choice between my kid getting speech therapy and my kid playing Pop Warner, guess what's winning?
Right.
Every day of the week, right?
Right.
And I know it's a minute part of it, but, you know, that combined with other areas, you know, every little bit adds up to a...
Excellent, excellent point, too. Yes, absolutely looked at that. So that, if we were to do that, would take a slightly more than $1.1 million deficit and make the slight, slightly less than $1.1 million deficit. So we looked at it, but at this time, it is not something that we're going to move forward with.
And I know the previous speaker had mentioned that there was about $17 million in unappropriated allowance for, for sick days. Is that something that's on the table that we can maybe, I mean, that's four times what you're, what we're talking about as an overall shortfall over the next five years? So is there any way to restructure those contracts to maybe reduce that to a $4 million number?
That's a great idea. That is something that is just called collective bargaining. It's the laws of our state, and it makes sense, because the unions would then, without it, say, oh, maybe it's 34 instead of 17. Or the board may say, you've earned it, but now it's zero, because we say unilaterally it's zero. So the laws for collective, that surround collective bargaining are in place for that reason, to prevent one party or another from unjustly... reason, to prevent one party or another from unjustly taking advantage. So is this something to talk about? Absolutely. And we will.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate my, there's got to be a better way, right? We all agree with that, and I think it's going to take some give and take. So everybody get on the phone, and let's try and work it out. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. You always talk about cutting the paras based off of seniority, but if I remember correctly, earlier in the presentation, you said you were working on what even seniority is. If you don't know what it is, how can you base stuff off of it?
So that's a great question. We know what seniority is. We just have to work out how it goes, the implementation of it, the process. So we do know what seniority is, but that was a great question. I'm sorry, what was your name?
Anthony.
Anthony. Thank you for coming up, Anthony. It was a great question.
Dr. Clark, members of the board. Good evening. My name is Joe Berger. I live on Alpine Street in Forked River. Both my wife and I are teachers, and between us, we have probably in excess of 50 years of teaching experience. One of the things that we have both learned repeatedly is that schools run, absolutely run on their support staffs, whether it's the cafeteria ladies, or the custodians, or the aides. If you want things to work well, you've got to treat these people well. You have to value that which they do. And Lacy is no exception. I was an aide here myself at the middle school seven, eight years ago, when I saw the exact same thing there. I'll say what everyone else here has said. The idea of eliminating aide positions, or the aides in general, is just absolutely unconscionable. My son has had an aide, and he has benefited tremendously over the years, especially the past couple of years. With his aide, he's absolutely blossomed, absolutely blossomed, not just academically, not just socially, but he's becoming a young man. And without Mrs. E. to help him along the way, I don't know where he would be, but I'm damn sure he would not be where he is today. So I'll say what everyone else is saying. There's got to be another solution. Instead of cannibalizing one another as to whose fault this is, I think the idea of trying to appeal to the state to say there's got to be a better way, I'm not going to get into who all in Ocean County is getting what. I grew up in North Jersey, which was, back then, an upper-middle-income area. Now it's a plain-old upper-income area. And there's a number of districts up there. It's dotted, the map up there is dotted with districts that are receiving increases. And I would just suggest that you look into that, or in your appeal, to look, as you're saying, looking for equity, looking for fairness. This is a decent, it's not the best district in the state, I fully realize it, but it certainly deserves a whole lot better than what it's getting. So please, look into that and fight for these kids. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, it's late. Everyone's tired, I'm sure. So I will be quick. I'm coming, from a parent perspective, so just sort of bear with me. My name's Amanda Cranford. I live on Lakeside Drive South in Forked River. My son is in kindergarten at Cedar Creek Elementary. My six-year-old has autism spectrum disorder, ADHD, sensory processing disorder, and impulse control disorder. His IEP currently states that he is to have a paraprofessional with him throughout the day to provide the consistency and the routine that he needs, which ultimately helps to keep him focused, but also minimize the sensory-seeking behaviors that he has. With the tremendous help and guidance that his qualified para has provided, he has thrived in both his self-contained classroom and the general education classroom that he is in. So given the vital role that the paras play in ensuring that a specific population of your students are able to gain an education, I was surprised, like many other parents, to learn that they were being let go and subject to rehire due to budget cuts. Cutting qualified paras is absolutely not the answer to the school district's budget problems. Students with disabilities in our district are legally entitled to a free and appropriate public education under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Removing qualified paras is removing a necessary support that many of these students need to function in the regular education classroom. They provide consistency, physical, emotional, educational support that many of our kids require to make it through their day. Without the support of their paras, a number of students who receive special education services would not be able to continue being educated in the general education classroom and would require full-time placement in a more restrictive environment. This is unacceptable. Students with disabilities have the right, by law, to be educated in the least restrictive environment and be included with their peers who do not have disabilities for as much of the school day as possible. If this action, cutting the paras, the qualified paras, results in our district no longer being able to effectively educate our students, parents such as myself, and I'm sure others, will be forced to retain legal counsel and fight for out-of-district placement. I ask you to seriously consider the impact that the resulting costs of placing students and covering that cost to put them in a district that is qualified to help them and give them the support they need, what that would have on your bottom line. The priority of this district is and should always be to provide an education to its students, all of its students, all of them, not just the kids who are able to play sports or to be in the drama club, all of the students. I implore you to ask yourselves whether you truly believe that cutting the qualified paras in our district is the most effective method for addressing budget issues, or could there possibly be an alternative that would be less harmful to the students? We need to consider who and what is most important in this district. That answer is and always should be the students that you serve. All children deserve the opportunity to receive an education, and for many of the students in our district, paras are a necessity to ensure their success. If cuts must be made, look to reduce overheads that don't directly impact students' ability to learn. Our kids, our special-needs kids, are marginalized, and they are underestimated all the time, all the time, by people in our community, by society at large. I remind you to not underestimate the ability of the parents of these kids to fight for what our kids need. The focus needs to remain on the goal of providing education. That is your job. That is the job of the district. It is the main task, not anything else. And do not lose sight of the fact that it is our kids' legal right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I'm going to close the floor for public comment, seeing none. And we will go on with regular business. Before we go on with regular business, I'm tired. We have to do committee comments, committee member comments, and then board member comments. So I'll pass the microphone down.
We're going to do it all together?
It's the same way we always do it. Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Don't rob, don't rob me. Don't rob, claw me.
Start with Frank.
Oh, Frank. Frank, Frank.
About those committee
Well, yeah, all right. So I'm going to start with, I'm actually going to do this in reverse order. I'm going to, I'm going to do my comments first, and then I'm going to do the policy committee. So comments, so I met Frank a year ago, here in this room, and he was one of the people who got up, and he was one of the most ferocious, aggressive people out there, one year ago. Now he's sitting right next to me up here on the board. And if you think that the guy who came up here a year ago and yelled in the mic isn't the same guy who comes into the committee meetings and yells about the stuff that everybody in here came up and yelled about, you're nuts. He really, really believes this stuff. He really, really wants to fight for the people in this school, for the most vulnerable in this school. He's said all the same things you guys have said here tonight. Do you think this is the first time we've heard? Because we've done this for hours. We met today at 12 o'clock. We did, what, an hour and a half today, at 12 o'clock, going over this stuff? It wasn't the first time we did it. And he's asking all the same questions. Isn't there a better way? Can't we do something else? Patrick, can't you dig a little bit deeper? Can't you, you know, he's, you know, almost insulting Patrick in some of the things he's saying, but, but the guy, you know, I mean, we're looking into different avenues. If you don't think Regina, who's sitting down the other end of the line over there, has pored over that 54-page budget day in and day out, you're insane. She writes you emails at 6:00 in the morning, at 10:00 at night, about this stuff. So don't think that the people who sit up on this side of the stage are not your advocates. That being said, we know we had to do something. We know that this was going to happen. So we had to do this riff, all right? Mr. Ryan, history lesson aside, what Frank said up here wasn't the wrong thing. The seniority thing is going to get in the way of people being back with the people that they're supposed to be with. That's on you. That's not on us. That's on the contract side of it. So Frank wasn't wrong in saying that. I back up that 100%. Of course, of course, everyone in, what is it, June? What did we get out in June? When you come back in September, you should have those same teachers, those same paras with the same kids. We can appreciate that fact up here, but there's got to be something from your side, too. So everyone who came out tonight and put on a red shirt and clapped and booed and did everything that we said, listen to what we're saying now. Go to the union president and say, this is what we want to do. This is how we can make this thing work best, all right? I don't know other way we can come up with. It wasn't like anybody came up here tonight and said something that wasn't said before, because we've been going over this. If you think this hasn't been weighing on us, you guys are all nuts, because we care. We actually do care about this stuff. We sat up here tonight, we listened to what everybody had to say, but this is what we have to say about it. You guys got it, you guys got to have some kind of concession on your side, too. A little sidebar on the contract, something, one time. Say, look, bad stuff is coming, but the kids are the most important thing, right? We all agree with the same thing. You guys out there, us up here, everybody in the school, everybody in the town, it's all about the kids, right? So do the right thing as far as they're concerned. Make sure that the right people get back with the right kids, because that was most of what we heard here tonight. It was individual stories of everybody that wanted to have what they want, the things that work for them, and we want to keep those things working. Not bad, right? It could work. I see a lot of, I saw a lot of heads in the background as Frank was saying it, everybody's doing this thing. But guys, I think there's a way we can work this thing out. So that was my comments on that side. Now for policy. So there was one policy that got tabled last month, and we went back to it this month. Myself, Tom, and Frank met on March 13th. We met at 5:00, and all we went over was one policy. We talked to a lawyer on the phone with a three-way call for 30 minutes of that. So what was explained to us is, so there's a New Jersey statute that says that development, distribution, and guidelines concerning transgender students. It's called 18A 36-41. That's the law. That's the state law. So that's the law that says that you have to come up with some kind of transgender guidelines. So then we got from the Commissioner of Education, Commissioner of New Jersey Education, he gave us the guidelines, or they gave us the guidelines. Strauss Esme wrote our policy, word for word. Strauss Esme, who they are, is a policy-writing firm, correct? There's about 600 schools in the state, they deal with over 500 of the schools, they write the policy for over 500 of the schools. So whatever they're writing here, they're writing for other places, too. A lot of other schools are going through the same thing. So they took word for word what the Commissioner of Education did, put it into our transgender policy, and we were told by the attorneys, not everyone was crazy about all the wording in it. But if we go outside of the template, if we take what was given to us by the state with the state law, Commissioner of Education, policy handed down to us with the policy firm that we deal with, and we go to the side and create our own policy, we're doing nothing but asking for trouble. Now, does anybody in this room think that that would be a good call after everything that we just went through tonight, which was all about budget and how much money we do not have to spend? So that being said, I'm proud to present policy 5756 tonight for our first read. Thank you.
Oh. You sure?
Yeah, good.
So it seems like a couple days ago that we opened the meeting, and I'd just like to congratulate our unsung hero Tristan and Students of the Month. Like I said, it seems like it was about a year ago. Beyond that, you know, we talked about this budget problem a lot tonight, and I've thrown something out there to you, and I just would like to reiterate again, the goal, as I see it, and again, I'm not 100% convinced myself, but I can tell you right now, I will never stop fighting for the kids, in committee, as a member of the board, or as a member of the public. But the understanding is the biggest savings that's kind of come out of this is by taking certain part-time paras or positions that should be part-time, who are not the paras everybody was talking about tonight. The paras that we're talking about tonight, the paraprofessionals that we're talking about here, are the people who work one-on-one with our children who have special needs and do a beautiful job of it. The other paras are still excellent people who do an excellent job, but probably these should be part-time positions. And the big savings by doing that is in the benefits of the part-time positions. It's unfortunate, but the choices of doing that, or cutting the paras who are one-on-one, or cutting the teaching staff, I'm sorry, I'm not going to vote to cut the teaching staff. I'm not going to vote to cut the paras who are one-on-one with our most needy students. So I do think there's something there. And again, to Mr. Ryan and to the union members, I'm not asking for you to just go blindly and throw a concession out. You know, I think that there can be protections put in there. The whole point of a carve-out is it becomes an addendum. It's got to be in writing, and both parties have to agree to it. So if you at least come and have a conversation about it with an open mind, you can still say no. But I'm just going to ask you to give it a shot and think about those children, you know, while you do it. Mr. Riggs mentioned, you know, the policy that we were talking about there, and one of the frustrations for me, we do have a current transgender policy, which I think is an excellent policy. I think it's very compassionate. It says that you have to make reasonable accommodations. I think that's a good thing. I had some challenges with the policy that's been given to us by the state for two major reasons. And those two major reasons are, one, it takes the parent out of it. It says that if a student decides they want to do this, that the parent has no say in it, that the school's supposed to keep the parents out of it and not inform the parents and not honor the parents' wishes. And I have a problem with that as a parent. And the other part is that it also says that students who are not transgender students have to make special accommodations, or you have to have them change their routine to accommodate transgender students. So that's why I will be voting no. But I do understand why the board feels we have to vote yes. And the bottom line is, the state puts this stuff down our throat, and if we don't adopt the policy, we're leaving ourselves open to huge litigation. And as Mr. Riggs said, the last thing that this district needs is to lose more money to litigation. So I just want to put that out there also. Thank you, Frank.
Yeah, I don't know what to do first. Okay, first, I'm going to make my comments, and then I'm going to give a report of curriculum. So I'd like to congratulate our Students of the Month, Callie, is it pronounced Callie? Jay, and our unsung hero Tristan. I want to congratulate the people that worked on Lacy Minute. I thought that was excellent, and I look forward to next month to see what you're going to show highlight for us. I also would like to thank Mr. George for his presentation, and I want to thank Mr. Lidle for organizing this and like a spur of the moment. So thank you, Tom. As far as the paras are concerned, I think anyone that knows me knows how I feel about teachers and paras. Ironically, I just gave a presentation to our paras in the district I'm working in, and I was praising them and listing numerous things that Ironically, I just gave a presentation to our powers in the district I'm working in, and I was praising them and listing numerous things that they do for children. Please remember, this is a preliminary budget. We still have well over a month to work things out. You have Board members up here that are very adamant about the powers and what they do. I think powers, and I have said this for a long time, I think powers are integral. Integral. I can't even speak now, I'm so tired. Integral for student success. Yeah, our teachers are great, and they're obviously the first lady or man in the classroom, but the powers are there. They have the heart, they have the soul for the kids. So please give us time to work all these things out. As I said, this is a preliminary budget. I think that's it for my notes for tonight. And as far as curriculum, very quickly, we had a meeting on March 4th, 2019. Mr. Giordano, Mrs. De Senza, and myself met with Dr. Clark and Mr. Decker. And we talked about several things. First of all, Mr. Decker reported about a response to intervention, RIT, systematic change. He's working on an alignment project. This has to do with INRS. And we had a lengthy discussion about how our INRS really needs to be improved, and because a lot of our students with intervention programs really don't have to go into special ed if you have the right interventions in place. So this is one of his babies. He's going to work on this and fine-tune this whole program. We also talked about the Ocean County Overdose Fatality Review Program. The Chief DeBella met with Dr. Clark, and this is from the Board of Health. They're doing a research project. I'm sorry, I'm trying to read this, and I don't have my reading glasses. They're collecting data related to fatalities because of drug overdoses and drug use, and to see if there are any patterns over the years in school. Do you want to add to any of that, or is that basically in a nutshell?
It's a longitudinal study.
Right.
So that the Department of Health can develop programs that are appropriate to support families.
And the committee felt that this was a great study to be a part of, because if we can help, from this study, if we can help kids in our town to, it would be beneficial. So we're going to do it. We also talked about the Professional Development Day. Feedback came back as very good. We already saw the Lacy Minute video. Our new athletic director, Mrs. Devento, she just revised the coaches' evaluation report. She created a new one. The evaluation report was so old that we were working with, so she devised a whole new one and shared the original version with us and the new version for comparative purposes. It's a good document. We also talked about, and I know Mrs. De Senza will talk about, Andy Kim visit congressman. Are you going to talk about that, Regina? On April 16th, visiting Lacy. And just a little side note about, we were talking about, you know, the governor and Sweeney and all the others, and how we need to make our voices heard. There are four state budget hearings coming up in March. I work in the Toms River Regional District again, and we sent 27 buses to Trenton to protest the budget cuts. And we have people that are going to go and speak, so maybe, I'm hoping some of us can go and speak at one of these. I'm sure, Regina, are you on that list?
Okay.
Okay. So March 20th in Trenton, March 21st in Newark, March 27th in Trenton, and March 28th in Harry's Point, which I have no idea where that is. But if you can, or even write letters to your congressman, it will really help, I'm sure. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, a couple comments. Congratulations to kids, Students of the Month, unsung hero. Thank you for moving everything. We gave 45 minutes, I think it only took a half hour to get everything set up. I got to reiterate, I don't know where people come up here and say bad things about our district. It simply amazes me every time I hear it. You know, you see test scores on these, the one that gives us a grade, one of the things that knock us down is like diversity. And why aren't they just worried about test grades? You know, test grade scores are going up. I constantly look at the AP classes. They're not the best, but know what? We're working on some things to bring up some of the courses, the AP grades up. But overall, you see these kids every week. We have two Students of the Month, engineering, same teachers get, you know, because they're in the STEM program. But some of these teachers, all the teachers, I mean, everyone's doing, you know, some have general classes, some have the AP classes, whatever. But they do a terrific job. Like I said, I got one kid that just graduated from high school. He's in college, Penn State, okay? He got accepted to, and I'm not bragging, got accepted to the business school in Penn State. But two kids from our class last year got accepted to the University of Miami. 33,000 applications, okay? 7% got accepted. Two kids from our school got accepted to the University of Miami, okay? We got kids going into the Navy, Air Force, Marines. We got kids that want to be doctors, engineers, lawyers. It simply amazes me how people come up here, and nothing against her. We had a retired teacher that's in the county, retired teachers, and she hears bad things about our school. You know, I'll put our school up against anybody. We got 22, 22 kids graduating with an associate's degree from Ocean County before they even graduate high school. That's amazing. But know what? Our school stinks. I just can't figure it out. Every time I hear it, it just ticks me off. And like I said, when I look at these scores that they put out on the star ledger or wherever, it's, you know, I think it's a bunch of BS, but that's my thinking. Contracts, like I said, we spent months and months and months. We pretty much admitted, we know, the teachers knew, we were underpaid district. And like I said, we weren't happy coming, nobody was happy coming out of negotiations. Teachers gave up, the staff gave up their benefits for a lower plan. I don't think it's that much, you know, it's not that bad, but they did, they gave concessions, we gave concessions, okay? We're still not, you know, the raises were good, brought us up substantially in the county compared to where we were. But, that being said, the money we saved from going from NJ 10 to 15, we still had to put 11% increase in our budget for benefits, which was almost $2 million. Cost of $2 million that we had to put extra in our budget for possible benefit increases because we're in a state plan. We have no control over that, okay? Whatever the state plan says, that's what happens. And unfortunately, being in state plan, we can't even come up with a reasonable number because our budget goes from July 1st to June 30th, but our benefits go from January 1st to December 31st. So we don't know what the increase exactly is until towards the end of the year. So hopefully, our experience gets better. We could get out of state plan, we could do more negotiations, come up with something better, and something a little cheaper. Getting to the committee report, finance, a couple of boring things. We spoke about bids for the replacement of gym floor at Milpon, replacement of boiler at Milpon. So waiting for some estimates, and we're in the process of getting them. The installation of our security vest wheels at all the schools. And we're talking about, we have to fix the track. We've been patching every year. It's costing us money, so we're looking, and we're not sure when we're going to do this, but we're looking at different ways where we could do something with the track where it's not going to really cost us as much money as it looks like it is going to right now. The bulk of our finance committee is about this budget. And like someone else said, a couple people said, you know, number one, I read the chatter all the time, and some of the things that came out about this, that powers are going to be making 850 an hour, we're going privatized. No, that's a possibility in every school district. But the Board, majority of the Board, we're not looking to do that. I know school, I go to schools all the time. What I do for my living now, I'm constantly in different districts. And I see what's going on with powers. Some have the private companies coming in, but we don't want that. We want a steady, whether it's the one-on-one or in our classrooms, we want steady people there, whether it's on a full-time basis or a part-time basis. But like Ms. Downing said, this is only tentative budget, okay? May 6th, we have to have our full budget, so we have probably about a little less than a month and a half. And this is the time where we really have to spend a lot of time, whether it's phone calls or going into the Board office. I always make a joke that I got to punch in on the clocks so I get paid for this, but we don't get paid. Like I said, I don't have anybody in the school system. You see the rumors that the only reason we take this job to get our family members jobs. I don't have any family members or friends that I got a job in the district. And another thing, vendors, we brought that up, too. Every day throughout the year, I think we just had a contract with our copying machines. Five-year contract, what did we save? Almost a little over $100,000 a year? We got our price down over, almost, I think it was a little over $100,000 a year for a five-year contract. The Mr. Giordano stuff, the WEI or whatever, the computer stuff, we got that down. So we are looking for ways to save money, cuts. So it's not a monthly meeting, monthly committee meeting, where every day we're making phone calls, we're talking about the budget, we're looking to save the jobs, okay? We looked into sports, we looked into, we did the busing before. We look into everything. And hopefully, you know, like I said, we got a month and a half, you never know what's going to happen, but tentative budget, and we'll see what happens in the next month and a half. Thank you.
Yeah, this is a little hard for me to sit up here tonight, man, I'm not going to lie. I really don't want to be here right now. I don't like feeling like I'm attacked for something that I have no control over whatsoever. You know, money's money, and unfortunately, when cuts are made, someone's going to suffer. So if it's not the powers, you know, if someone suggested cutting the sports, there's going to be, you know, an auditorium filled with angry sports parents, you know, cursing us and yelling at us and thinking we're the bad guys. I have two children, and my son is in the preschool special needs programs, and 100% powers are so important. I mean, that's undeniable. So, so important, you know? Again, you can't put a price on them, but the problem is, when there's no money, there's no money, man, you know? And like, you know, you're talking about raises for teachers. We don't have money, you know? Wouldn't it be great to give reward system and raises? But it's like, we're talking about that, how are we even going to talk about that right now when we're making cuts, unfortunately? So for me, sitting here, you know, the young man asked, and wait for you to get up here and talk, that was great for you, but you know, how much is the Board getting paid? You kidding me? I'm missing time with my kids right now. You know, I tuck my kids in the bed every night, and right now I can't do that, and I have a flight out tomorrow morning. So for me, tonight was nothing short of suffering a little bit, because it's like, you know, people rally together and they clap, you know, and it's like, you're against us. I mean, I don't know why you're against us. How many of, well, it's empty now. Everybody said what they had to say, and then they leave. How many people run for the Board? How many people who have such, so many things to say, how many people are running for the Board to make a change? Be the change, right? If you want to change, be the change. Everybody wants their, you know, their five minutes. And a lot of times, people just want to be argumentative. How many people are showing up when there's good things going on? How many people are praising? You know, so for me, I literally almost walked out five times because I don't care, and I will, you know? And the thing is, I care about the kids more than anything. I care about the teachers more than anything. And that's why I came on this, because I care about the kids and the teachers. But if I feel I'm getting attacked, it's like, man, like, what is happening right now? Some things are just out of our control. Like, I'll tell you, I could do nothing personally about what you're asking to do. Nothing. Zero. I don't see any benefits personally for me being on the Board of Education, you know, besides just getting verbally abused, to be quite honest. So I have to ask myself, how much longer do I have on this? You know, because I feel a lot of the, a lot of the ways people go about making change, I can't even say what I truly feel about it. Because everybody wants to talk. What do they do? Right? What do they do besides talk? And if you think you're just talking to us, and we have the power to just give them $1 million without making cuts somewhere, you're very, very wrong. And again, I can't stress enough how important I think powers are. I really think they're so needed. Do I think that sports should be cut? No. Do I think powers should be fired? No. I don't. But it just is what it is sometimes, and that sucks. And I will say that. I don't know if I'm allowed to say it, but I'm saying it. It sucks. It really does, you know? So I hope, I think the smartest thing I heard was from him with the, you know, the raising the three cents and something. I'm not good with numbers, man. I need my own para. But like, that made so much sense to me, but for sure, people would complain about taxes, right? Because that's what people do, they complain. So we raise taxes, and then people complain about taxes being raised. So we can't win sometimes. And it's unfortunate that some people have to suffer. It really, really is. But I'm telling you, we're not the enemy. I'm not the enemy at all. It's like when people are coming up here saying, "Oh, you think that powers are just disposable? You don't care." Who are you to talk about what I feel? Can't sit here and put words in my mouth, you know? I came here to make a change. And what I'm seeing right now is there's no change that's worthwhile. Because no matter what change is made, will make you happy, right? And let's say we could keep the powers? Okay, we'll cut the sports. And then, we're hated. We're still hated, right? So that's just what it comes down to. Hopefully, something could work out. I really hope we could come to an agreement. I'd gladly pay three cents extra, $5 extra, $100 a month extra to keep the powers. For me, that's no problem. Listen, I'll make a, I'll make a good donation if I could, right? Whatever I could do personally, I could do. But one person can't do it, right? If everybody's in here willing to rally and go around town and say, "Hey, let's all make a change, and let's put money in to keep them," it's not that hard. A million dollars isn't that much. We could do it. I'll start with the first $500. I'll give, no, I'll give $1,000 of my own money, right? If you could find something out. You have my word. Probably even more, all right? So I just hope the next Board meeting, we're not viciously attacked again.
Well, everyone said a lot already about the budget, so I'll reserve my comments, but I'd like to congratulate the Seniors of the Month, Jay Holland, Kaylee Pollan, and our unsung hero Tristan Eli. Outstanding work. Very dedicated students. On Thursday, February 21st, it had to be one of the busiest nights in this district. At 4:00, there was the Forkett River School Literacy Fair. And while I was there, I tried the third and fourth grade reading comprehension park exams. Felt this was a very important thing that I should do. And the fourth grade tests seemed to be easier than the third grade tests, but they are frustrating exams. It was quite an experience. And they were reading therapy dogs in attendance at literacy night, and they are the highlight of the literacy fair. It was truly amazing to see the children reading to the dogs. Later, there was a PTC meeting at the middle school, and then the high school had the science fair going on, and the prom fashion show. fair going on, and the prom fashion show. And then after that, I stopped by the Lenoka Harbor PTO meeting, and I'm very sorry that I missed the retirement plaque ceremony for Athletic Director Karen Hughes during the basketball game. I had planned to get there, but there wasn't enough time. Friday, February 22nd, was the Health Department's annual 3D drinking, drugging, and driving event at the Ocean County Mall Center Court. While I was there, I tried the DUI goggles, goggles, and walking the white line, and it was so very difficult. And then I tried something else they had there, the marijuana goggles. Their task was impossible, and I could not see the color red on paper. So can you see a stop sign or a stoplight under the influence? I don't know, and I don't wanna try. On Saturday, February 23rd, was the annual PTSA Daddy Daughter Dance at the high school, what a crowd. More than 800 people attended and danced the night away. Heather Scanlon and I put together hundreds of hot dogs. Sincerest thanks to all who worked to make this dance such a success. Takes many hands to put on a large event like this. People don't realize the work that goes on behind the scenes. Monday, February 25th, was the Municipal Alliance Meeting at the Recreation Building. The public is always invited to attend any Municipal Alliance Meeting on the fourth Monday of the month at 7:00 PM. Our discussion centered around the legalization of marijuana in New Jersey. Please visit the website Learn About Sam, Smart Approaches to Marijuana. This is becoming a very important topic in the state of New Jersey. Tuesday morning, February 26th, I went to see the Battle of the Books at the Forkett River School. It was the 20th year for this event. In the evening, as we saw on the Lacy Minute, was the Harlem Wizards game, and they played the Lacy Staff. This is a great fundraiser now organized by the Forkett River Rotary Club. And thank you to all who made that fun night possible. Again, it takes many hands to put on an event like that. There's just been so much to do in this district. And Saturday night, March 2nd, was a fantastic play, Peter Pan Jr. at the middle school. It was very well-attended, and the students did a wonderful job. Their performances were outstanding, and it's amazing to see what they can do with some great costumes and props. Monday, March 4th, the Forkett River School celebrated Dr. Seuss's birthday. I'd like to thank Mr. Fiedler for allowing me the privilege of reading to the classes. The students were very attentive and well-behaved. March 4th, as Nick already spoke about, the board had our curriculum and finance committee meetings. This is truly a difficult budget. Wednesday night, March 6th, was Family Math Night at Cedar Creek School. It was very well-attended, as students and parents learn new math games. Events like this help increase student achievement. Thank you to all of the teachers that worked so hard to set up this night for the students. March 7th, Job and Career Night at Lacy High School, also very well-attended, and it was a great job, this event was put together by students and faculty, and I saw many, many students applying for jobs, and I hope everyone gets the summer job they need and want. Saturday, March 9th, I attended my first official meeting as a District 9 County Rep for the New Jersey School Board Association Legislative Committee in Trenton. And all board members are welcome to attend legislative committee meetings since they are public meetings. Tuesday night, March 12th, Ocean County School Board Meeting in Tuckerton, and there was a great presentation on socio-emotional learning. Teaching children with adverse childhood experiences can be a challenge, and there can be great academic gains for those students by practicing something as simple as yoga or meditation. Wednesday night, March 13th, there was a fabulous Disney Spring Chorus Concert at Lenoka Harbor School. We saw some of the musical selections on the Lacy Minute. March 14th, I attended the Pi Bee at the middle school. I had never been to an event like this before, so I really had to see it. This was an incredible competition. The honors math students annually compete for first place in reciting the most numbers for the infinite number known as pi, 3.14. The winner recited over 220 digits correctly. Photographic memories at work. In the evening that night was Family Math Night at Forkett River School. More creative math games were enjoyed by the students. And now we have upcoming events. The Spring Play at the High School, April 11th, 12th, and 13th, me and my girl. See the website for times and other information. The public is cordially invited to attend, I believe there is admission. And as Mrs. Downing already stated, we have been fortunate to be notified by Congressman Andy Kim's office that he will be visiting Lacy High School on Tuesday, April 16th. And in May, there are going to be two music competitions at Great Adventure, Saturday, May 4th, and Friday, May 31st. Music in the Parks, May 4th, will feature the G&amp;T Jazz Band, and they are excellent. Festival in the Parks, May 31st, will feature the Milpon Chorus. If you have time to go to Great Adventure either one of those dates, be sure to see the Lacy student performances. Once again, I'd like to remind the public to seriously consider becoming a school board candidate. You must be a registered voter over the age of 18, able to read, write, and speak English. Many of our graduating seniors are eligible. Think about it. The petition should be available from the County Clerk's Office in Tom's River this week. Our next meeting will be on Monday, April 15th, as noted in the agenda, and on Monday, May 6th, the board will hold a public hearing on the 2019-2020 budget at 6:00 PM, one hour earlier than our normal public business meeting. Thank you all who attended here tonight. Everyone has busy lives, we appreciate you coming out. Mr. Giordano.
All right, I wanna thank all the board members for their comments. This was kinda awkward tonight, having to pass this thing back and forth, and kudos to Mr. Lidle for accommodating us and getting this meeting set up. So I'm gonna try to be brief, but, you know, everything's already been said. I, I don't like what we're considering doing. In fact, months ago, I was dead-set against it. And, you know, in my heart, I really am against it still. But when you look at what we're faced with from a budgetary perspective, when you look at where there's areas where we could potentially make cuts, you know, we've talked about sports programs, you know, maybe we reduce the number of AP classes, maybe we, you know, reduce after-school programs. There's no easy answer, there's no easy fix. It, it is what it is, and I know we talked about, you know, you gotta make your voice heard, you gotta make your voice loud at the state level, and I, I think that's important. You know, we settled on a very good contract, I believe, for the teachers, and as Mr. Morandi had said, it's probably still not even putting you in the middle of the map, but it's brought you up a little bit more to get you competitive. You know, there's things that I really wanna say right now, but I'll refrain from saying it in regards to that, and I, I do believe that if we sit together in a room, Mr. Ryan, President of the Union, we might be able to hash this out and come to a better conclusion. That's what I'd like to do, I think that's what most of the other board members up here, if not all of them, would like to do. You know, I think we always do what's in the best interest for the kids, you know, you asked about what the compensation is for this job. I'll tell you what the compensation is for this job. It's handing out the Student of the Month awards, and seeing the looks in the kids' eyes when they get recognized, seeing the pride in their parents when they're recognized. It's handing out diplomas at the end of the school year. It's seeing the excitement at graduation, it's seeing where our students go after to college, some great colleges. One of the young women students on our dais is going to Villanova, great school. Of course, I'm not happy with Villanova right now, because I'm a Seton Hall grad. We have a good school district, but we're faced with a ton of fiscal challenges, as is many of the school districts in this state. So there's a couple of articles, I mentioned it earlier, anybody that wants to reach out to me, my email address is right there on the website, I want you to send me an email. I, I don't think I've ever gotten an email, oh, I shouldn't say that, I've gotten emails, but not many, okay? You guys gotta read this article that's in New Jersey Spotlight about the state funding, how the state funding works, what some of our government leaders are saying in regards to state funding, how they think the burden should be put on the taxpayer. You know, as Mr. Horvath said, 75 to 80% of the stuff that we have to deal with is dictated to us by the state. We really don't have much of a choice. So, you know, I, I'm gonna, I'll end my comments there about the whole budget thing, it's simply this, this is a tentative budget, I'm gonna vote yes to this tentative budget, but I'm gonna shock everybody right now that's sitting up here at me. If I'm not satisfied with this budget, come May 6th, I'm not gonna vote yes. And you can read between the lines on that with certain things. I'm not happy with the decisions that we're making right now, I'm just not sure there's much else that we can do, given the circumstances that we're in, okay? Of course, to all our students, congratulations, Ally, Jay, Tristan, great accomplishments, nice accomplishment tonight with the new Lacy Minute, I thought that was awesome. You know, we have a lot to be proud of in this school district, but I also think there's a lot that we could be doing better, and we all have to collectively work together, this leadership team, school leadership team, this Board of Education and the union, and maybe we can find some better answers. With that, I'll conclude my remarks and go on to business. So right now, right now, we'll go new business, 1 through 10.
12.
Is it 1, 2? It says, oh, that's, you know what, where's my glasses? That's old, tired eyes. 1 through 20.
We're tabling...
You're tabling item 9.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Horvath. Anything else you're abstaining to or voting no on, Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
So number 5, I'm not changed.
Okay.
Number 13, E5756, no.
Okay.
E5111, vote, and yes.
Thank you. Mrs. DeSensa.
Yes on all except 35 items on list of bills, item 2, which I will vote for the business committee to trade it tomorrow. No on item 5.
Item 5 is... Oh my gosh. Mr. Riggs. Mr. deBlass. Mrs. Downing.
I'm abstaining on item 82, go on, 9, 6, 9, 1. So A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, Z.
Crystal. Mr. Morandi.
I'm voting yes. Second, number 5, it's a tentative budget, yes. And know what, during my comments, I wanna thank Mr. DeGeorge and his staff. He has a very hard job trying to get this budget fine. Let me tell you, I drive by Weston Boulevard Saturdays and Sundays, and I see Spock at the board office on the second weekends. Are we voting on, uh, tabling 9?
Yes, tabling 9.
It is, it is as a courtesy.
Yeah.
Yes. Mr. Giordano.
Yes, and I, you know, I just wanna make an additional comment. The budgeting process lasts a year. We start pretty much the day after school. And tireless hours go into building a zero-line item budget, right? And these cuts came out when? In the last quarter, right? So nine months, we build a budget, and then the state says, oh, by the way, you're, you know, gonna miss this much, or we're gonna cut this much. So you gotta think about the phenomenal job that Mr. DeGeorge has done to get us to a position where we're at a 1.91 tax increase, still some work that we need to do. It's a tentative budget, so I'll vote yes. On all of it, the whole thing. Did we get everybody? B, donations. Roll call.
Mr. Horvath. Mrs. DeSensa. Mr. Riggs. Mr. deBlass. Mrs. Downing. Mr. Morandi. Mrs. Giordano.
Yes, thank you. What is she missing? Donations, professional days, and curriculum? Or programs? Programs and curriculum? Isn't that what I said? Yeah. C, programs and curriculum.
Professional days and workshops.
Why am I... Am I wrong? It's, it's backwards, so I'm not reading the wrong thing. Professional days and workshops. How does she know we know it when it's on here like this?
Because she was reading it.
Oh.
Who is the second? Who is the second?
User switch. Programs and curriculum. Did everybody?
Not yet, I didn't start. Mr. Horvath. Mrs. DeSensa. Mr. Riggs. Mr. deBlass. Mrs. Downing. Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes. Now is it D? There is no D, okay. So we'll go to E, certificated personnel. Roll call.
Mr. Horvath.
Everybody wake up.
Mrs. DeSensa. Mr. Riggs. Mr. deBlass. Mrs. Downing. Mr. Morandi. Mr. Giordano.
Yes. F, non-certificated personnel. Roll call.
Mr. Horvath. Mrs. DeSensa. Mr. Riggs. Mr. deBlass. Mrs. Downing. Mr. Morandi. Mr. Giordano.
Yes. I believe we have a few add-ons.
We have three, as a matter of fact. Number one, moved at the board at the recommendation of the superintendent, terminate staff member 857289, effective April 19, 2019. Mr. Horvath. Mrs. DeSensa. Mr. Riggs. Mr. deBlass. Mrs. Downing. Mrs., Mr., Mr. Morandi. Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
The second walk-on motion is appointment of staff members, moved at the board at the recommendation of the superintendent, appoint the following food services staff members to interim positions as follows. ID number 856584, Maria Amor Rosano, to interim lead at the middle school, effective March 19th through a time to be determined at $17 per hour. Staff member 856828, Catherine Rivera Perez, to interim cook at the middle school from March 19th to a time to be determined at $16 per hour. Mr. Horvath. Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensa.
Yes.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Mr. deBlass.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Final walk-on motion is extension of long-term suspension of student. Move that the board approve the extension of the suspension of student ID 904202 until the date of the next regular Board of Education meeting to be held Monday, April 15th, 2019.
Move. Roll call.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensa.
Yes.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Mr. deBlass.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?